Mr. Matthews, can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear us? Thank you.
Welcome to the Lethbridge City Council meeting for Tuesday, June the 29th, 2021. I'm going to begin with the reconciliation statement. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we are gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot people of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot people past, present, and future, who are recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationship to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Métis Nation of Alberta, Region Three. We'll move on to bouquets. Actually, we'll do a roll call.
Mayor Spearman, Councillor Carlson.
Present.
Councillor Kaufman.
Present.
Councillor Higgin.
Present.
Councillor Morrow.
Yeah.
Councillor Miyashiro. I see him.
Sorry, here.
Thank you. Councillor Parker.
Present.
Acting Mayor Croson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Here.
Mayor Spearman.
Present.
All present, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to bouquets. Start with Councillor Miyashiro.
Um, nothing at the moment, Mayor Spearman, thank you.
Councillor Carlson.
Nothing right now, your worship.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Oh, thank you, your worship. Just a quick shout out to the Southern Accord Chorus Barber Shoppers. You know, they came up with a unique way to provide entertainment and doing it safely. They had a concert on Saturday night called a Carber Shop Concert, where you park your car and you tuned into an FM frequency and they provided some entertainment in a safe manner. So just a shout out to the innovative ways to come up with ways to do things in these times. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kaufman.
Nothing, Mayor Spearman.
Okay, Councillor Morrow.
Nothing, thank you.
Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I just want to say a great shout out to anyone who is working outside in this. I know we have a lot of city staff who are working outside and a lot of other organizations as well, and I can only imagine how difficult it is to maintain work outside. And thank you also to everyone who is providing water. We see many of the homeless are having water provided through various organizations, but also the cooling centers, et cetera, that where people can get water. When I go out on my morning walks, there's people who have water out for people's dogs when they're walking, et cetera. So just thank you to everyone who is doing their best during this heat wave and to everybody working through it. So that's my bouquet.
Thank you. Councillor Higgin.
Nothing at this time, Mayor Spearman, thank you.
Councillor Parker.
Uh, just to follow up on Councillor Croson, to all the people that are working outside, both who work for the city, but also other people who work in other professions outside, appreciate all the work that you do. And a special shout out to the staff and the crew that got Sixth Avenue done on time. I know a lot of people had a lot of headache in the mornings, but it's well worth it. It was nice coming down at this afternoon, or if not this morning, to see it open and ready to go. So my kudos to the infrastructure services for getting that all done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yep, it's great to get those construction projects out of the way, but it is construction season, so, yep. Very good. I'd like to thank the folks who are making the downtown come alive again. And there have been a number of events downtown. The European Soccer's on, there's people out in the street. The weekends, the downtown's starting to come alive again. That is great to see. I'd also like to offer bouquets to the people that have helped us with our celebrations in the, in the month of June for Indigenous Week and the Métis flag raising and also for the Pride flag raising. So thank you for everyone who contributes to our city and has done so in the last month. And now if you can move on to the consent agenda. I have a resolution from Deputy Mayor Campbell. Be it resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of City Council held on Tuesday, June the 15th, 2021 be approved and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign the same. And further be it resolved that the minutes of the public hearing held on Tuesday, June the 15th, 2021 be approved and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign the same. And further be it resolved that City Council receive for information the following reports: the status of directed resolutions for June 29th, 2021, and the procurement summary report for May 2021. And further be it resolved that City Council adopt the recommendations contained in the following standing committee reports: City of Lethbridge Transportation Safety Plan, Fifth Avenue North and Thirteenth Street Functional Planning and Design, Industrial, Commercial, and Institutional, ICI, and Construction and Demolition, CND, Sectors Waste Diversion Implementation Strategy, 2020 Annual Report, Waste Collection Efficiencies, Cart Relocation Project Update, Lethbridge Transit City Link Engagement Presentation, 2021 Capital Project Grant Recommendations, Extension to Temporary Changes to Policy CC56 Fee Assistance Policy, Galt Museum and Archive Strategic Plan Engagement Session, and Affordable and Social Housing Capital Project Grant. And further be it resolved that City Council provide first reading to the following bylaws: Bylaw 6128 Land Use Amendment RE 2244 Avenue North, Black Wolf 2, and Bylaw 6301, a bylaw to provide for the closing of certain roads. And further be it resolved that City Council directs that a public hearing be scheduled for Tuesday, July the 27th, 2021 at 4:00 PM for the following bylaws: Bylaw 6128 and Bylaw 6301. Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Uh, I will open this up for questions from my colleagues, and I see there are some.
Okay, start with Councillor Kaufman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman, to the city manager or designate, and sorry, my camera's off because I'm split screening here. Under Status of Directed Resolutions, delegation of authority matrix, do you have an ETA for when that will be done? Are we looking at the next council for that one? Thank you, Councillor Kaufman. I'll defer to the city solicitor, perhaps the clerk. I believe that's going to Governance Committee on the 13th of July, is that correct?
That, uh, city solicitor here, the item that's listed by itself there encompasses two distinct sort of bodies of work. One, I'll defer to the clerk to speak about, which is really more council-focused, and the other is more internally focused in terms of being the delegation of authority from the city manager to different levels of management within the city to clarify those lines of authority. We're currently developing a pilot for one small area of the city on that, but it, but it is likely not going to be complete until 2022, the administrative side.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Solicitor Lowen, as well. With regards to the governance review, there was a recommendation that the delegation from council to city manager to the designated officers to the boards committees' commissions, that that would be completed prior to the next election for the new council. So we plan on bringing that probably in the fall at the next Governance Committee meeting.
Okay, thank you. Secondly, just on the very last one that got added last week, I just noticed it says that the authority to allocate requests for unclaimed found money under $5,000 to the founder, I'm not sure if that should be finder, just as a, as a point of, point of punctuation, point of spelling or grammar. The other thing was not just on the procurement report, if I could, I noted under D45 that we've already spent about $2 million on the list of projects that came that we are, we received federal funding through ICIP of the eight point, I think it's 8.6 million. We still have eight projects to go with about six and a half million dollars left. I'm just wondering if there's needs to be a reprioritization of where we spend that money, or are we still going to be within budget of the remaining expenditures? And if that, and that might require a little further investigation, but it's just something that I'm sort of monitoring to see how we're getting along on that.
Councillor Kaufman, we will undertake to evaluate those ICIP projects and provide council with an update following that analysis.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know I've raised this before and I'm going to raise it again. The consent agenda, the section that has the council, City Council adopt the recommendations contained in the following standing policy committee reports. I don't know who to address this to, but maybe it would be nice now to maybe get an understanding of how this works, because the way I see it is that council chose to get rid of the CIC committees, which was a committee of all members of council. All members of council were involved, got to ask questions, and were actually involved in the vote. We got rid of that for the Standing Policy Committee, where we have four members of council only that get to vote on the issues being discussed at those committees. Now, I understand that every member of council can sit in and partake, but when this comes to council like this and we adopt the recommendations, I find several issues with this. Number one, where do we get community input and community involvement in this? Because I don't know where and when they will have an opportunity. And number two, I don't, quite frankly, don't believe that this should be in the consent agenda. We should have a totally different agenda item where each chair of the Standing Policy Committee actually reports, so that it's public, open, transparent, and that everyone has an opportunity to hear and see and, and know what's going on. We talk about communicating and being open, and I don't find that this is exactly what we're doing. So I don't know who wants to comment on that. Maybe I'll start maybe with the city manager to get your take or feel on that, or the city clerk, or whoever. Thank you.
Who would like to respond? This is a, this is the process that City Council has adopted, so I'm not sure if it's the city manager or the city clerk.
Bishop, I can, I can address it.
Okay, we'll start with the city clerk.
Thank you. In council's procedure bylaw, the rules were changed, council did adopt that last year, and items that go to committee can have public engagement there. They can either speak at the meeting, or they can provide public submission, or they can do both. So that's where the community involvement would come into play. Council has always had a consent agenda. We have included in the procedure bylaw that items from committee will be placed on consent agenda, and they will be adopted by one omnibus. Now, there's options for them not being on the consent agenda. The Agenda Review Committee of Council may advise that those be presentations or submissions. The Agenda Review Committee of Committees may advise that it be a presentation or submission instead of a consent. And as well, any member of council during a council meeting can pull off any item off the consent agenda for discussion and for a separate vote. Thank you.
I don't know if that answered Councillor Morrow's question.
Well, yeah, it does, and I appreciate that, and I thank city clerk for explaining that. And I, I'm fully aware of the process, and I do realize that any member of council can pull these. The problem that I see is, so right now, if I wanted to, I could say that I'd like to pull every one of these and have a presentation by every one of these Standing Policy Committees. I don't know how much, how well that would be received, and it's just gonna, again, extend the whole process. So I guess I'm just not happy with the way we do this. I'm thinking that the Agenda Review Committee should make these all a presentation. So just my, my opinion.
Okay, thank you for stating that. If we, it's up to council if they wish to change the process going forward. Councillor Higgin.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Hold on, connect. Let's try this again. Just further to what Councillor Morrow was mentioning, I, I've been to, and I try to make it to each one of these SPCs, whether I'm a member of it or not, but again, we can't sometimes make all of them with other commitments. And I'm just, I feel the, pretty much the exact same way. I'm going to be voting on something that I don't know anything about. I'm having four members of council present it, recommend it, without knowing if I didn't go to that meeting, anything about that. Now it'll be in the, it'll be in some of our minutes, you know, we can check some of that information, but I just, I am, I am really against having it in a consent agenda, and I'd like a presentation, just a little more transparent. The chair of that particular committee could, could present on what was being brought forward to vote on, but just in a consent agenda, just my opinion, I don't like that either.
Councillor Miyashiro.
Just a question, Mr. Spearman, how much longer are we going to talk about this? We did governance for how long? And we approved the new governance structure, our governance committee worked on it for months. Everybody agreed that this is the way we're going to go, everyone in terms of council as a whole. There's an opportunity for every council member to attend every SPC. There's an opportunity, once the SPC's done, to get the minutes from that meeting and to contact either your colleagues on those SPCs or administration to get more information. To have the same people do the same presentation to council as a whole would be so counterproductive and a waste of our administration's time. It would be, doesn't even bear thinking about.
Okay. It's my understanding the SPCs are basically recessing for the most part for the summer. Will start again in September. Maybe at this point, I'm not sure if anything further can be done today that's productive, unless somebody wants to pull out, as has been indicated, any one of these or all of these, have a discussion on each one. But otherwise, we would defer it to the next council to resolve.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we remove from the consent agenda the further be it resolved, that section where all the recommendations, all of those, and that they be forwarded to the next council meeting as presentations.
Okay, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, nine, the nine bulleted items.
Yes.
Okay, do you have a seconder?
I will, I will second that.
Okay, seconded by Councillor Higgin. I think the intent of Councillor Morrow's motion is clear. Did he want to add anything else, Councillor Morrow?
No, you're right, Mr. Mayor, it's pretty clear. Thank you.
Okay, so what if we have a roll call vote since clearly some are in favor and some are opposed?
Could we have discussion on that, Mayor Spearman?
Yes, we could, okay, I thought it was clear, but that's what my intention was. Go ahead, Councillor Higgin, yeah.
Thank you, sorry, Mayor Spearman. I've just, it just doesn't mean a complete presentation. This can be the, the chair of that particular committee come forward and just explain what is, I guess, a Reader's Digest version of exactly what happened in that policy committee. If there's questions, administration is there, but I don't expect to have the exact same presentation, as, as we're well aware that hours and hours, and, and although I still think that's the most transparent way, at minimal, to have a, a presentation done on that by the chair of the committee. I don't know if it's really anything needs to be added, but that's just what I would see.
Okay, thank you. Acting Mayor Croson.
What it sounds like to me is we're actually asking for them to be submissions, not presentations, and that would, of course, be up to Agenda Review Committee to decide anyways. But if my colleagues wish, I have all of the things from Civic Works prepared and can do them as submissions today if we just want to move them later on to the agenda. Certainly, I can read things to people if they didn't have a chance to read it for themselves. So I prefer, I can go today with submissions, if that is the way we wish to go.
Okay, Councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Just, I think it needs to be clear that there is opportunity for public involvement at our SPCs, and all of this information that goes to the SPCs is public, is, is very, so we've heard talk that it's not very transparent. I, I just want to make sure that nothing is hidden in committees, all of this is public, all of this is thoroughly discussed, and then all of the information is A, available to council on that, of the committee's pages, as well as here in our agenda. So all the information is there, and all the information has been viewed publicly and questioned publicly, and the opportunity for public participation is there. I just want to be clear to folks that when you hear, oh, it's not very transparent, and oh, I want to be clear, all of this is in public, is very transparent, all the information, all the questioning, all the discussion happens in public, and the public is welcome to comment, present, as well as every member of council, and all the information is there. As Councillor Croson has kindly stated, she could read it to members of council who perhaps declined to read the information in front of them. But I just want to be clear that the, it, nothing, there's nothing non-transparent about the process. I want to be clear on.
Thank you. Councillor Kaufman.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I just, process councillor, or sorry, Acting Mayor Croson offered to move them to submissions today, at least deal with hers. I'm just wondering if the mover or the seconder would be accepting of that.
Councillor Morrow, then Councillor Higgin, if, if Councillor Croson makes submissions later on today on the committee, the tea chairs, are you satisfied with that? Do you still need these coming back at the next council meeting? Councillor Morrow?
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that.
You're fine with it? Councillor Higgin?
I'm fine with that as well, and if there's any, any of the others that want to present, that's fine as well, but yes, that's, that's totally fine. And I just, I do want to make just a comment regarding all the information provided, that is correct. If councillors, again, are not in, in the meeting, the opportunity to debate and to, to speak with the community is, that information coming forward is by four councillors, that's not by the whole group, so I just want to make sure that people are aware of that.
Okay, thank you. That sounds like general consensus that submissions today would be accepted, even though the agenda's ordered.
Yeah, sorry, I don't consent to it, but just so you know.
Okay.
Everybody doesn't consent to it. It's an incredible waste of our time with a busy agenda that we have. If people don't read it, as Councillor Croson said earlier, it's available to people, well in advance of this meeting.
We are well aware of that, yeah.
Okay, so that, just, just record my objection, please.
Okay, there was a motion on the floor from Councillor Morrow that, seconded by Councillor Higgin, that these nine items be deferred to the next meeting. Do we want to amend that motion that any that don't receive a submission today would be deferred to the next meeting? Is that the intent? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I made a save time, I would suggest that we just bring them all to the next meeting. Just leave it as is, as my original resolution.
Okay, then we'd have to vote on the resolution as it is. Okay.
Yes, yes.
And does the seconder agree? Yeah, okay. All right. Any further debate?
Yeah, Mayor Spearman, just for clarif, just for clarification, sorry, it's Councillor Kaufman. The motion reads submitted as presentations at the July 13th meeting of City Council. So these are not coming back as submissions, they're coming back as presentations.
Correct.
Councillor Kaufman, it doesn't matter, presentation or submission, it doesn't matter, either one.
Actually, it does make a big difference, Councillor Morrow, because a presentation means somebody will have to come and do a presentation on each one versus submissions where they are actually.
You're right.
Yeah, yeah.
You're right. So I, presentation, leave it as presentation, you're right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spearman.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right, uh, can we have a roll call vote? Everybody understands the motion?
Mister Mayor, can I close debate?
Yes, you can.
Uh, since we had a little bit of debate on this, um, okay, so, first of all, nobody here, and I know I'm not, uh, denying the fact that these meetings aren't public, and I'm not denying the fact that these meetings are not on council's website, and anybody can access them, and anybody and their dog can read these, I totally understand that. The fact is, and the point I'm trying to make here, is, there are four members of council that sit on these standing policy committees, that hear presentations, have debate, have discussion, and then vote and make recommendations to council. These recommendations are coming in a consent agenda. Now you've gotta understand that these standing policy committees, their meetings are usually on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, in the middle of the afternoon. People are working, people do not have an opportunity to sit and listen to three hours of each and every one of our standing policy committees. Once the committee makes their recommendations, I get it, it gets to the public agenda, and it gets into our website and everywhere else, but I believe that it's incumbent and it's responsible for the chair of every committee to make a presentation to inform the, the public. I don't see anything wrong with that. We do that all the time. We have committees make recommendations, and the recommendations usually do not come under a consent agenda. So, I hope you support the resolution and you understand the point I'm trying to make here. I call, I call for the question, call the vote.
Okay, it's roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Counselor Kaufman?
Opposed.
Counselor Higgin?
In favor.
Counselor Morrow?
Favor.
Counselor Miyashiro?
Opposed.
Counselor Parker? Acting Mayor Croson?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Opposed.
Mayor Spearman?
In favor.
Counselor Carlson?
Opposed.
That is four to five, that's lost. Four to five. Oh, sorry, you're right, six, three to six, lost.
No, it's four to five. Sorry, it's four to five. Counselor Higgin, Counselor Parker, Counselor, Mayor Spearman, and myself voted yes.
Right, right, so the original, um, vote that I mentioned is correct, four to five, lost.
So, point of clarification, please.
Go ahead.
On a consent agenda, if anybody objects to it, it immediately gets pulled and put into submissions. So was that an objection to the consent agenda and it becomes submissions today, or does that not count as one? City Clerk, um, I'd like some clarification on that, because all somebody has to do is object to the consent agenda without a vote, isn't that true?
Yes, that is true. We put in the procedure bylaw that if one member would like to pull any item, it would be moved to submissions for discussion, yes.
So, is that, um, the fact that the vote was failed, doesn't really matter because somebody had an objection and it becomes submissions, am I correct?
Uh, the chair would like to rule that way. If, if, um, Counselor Morrow would like all those items as submissions today, he has that right to do that on today's agenda, pull them from consent.
Okay, Counselor Morrow, what's your wish?
Well, that's what I wanted to avoid. I guess I'm just suggesting that that is what we do moving forward, and I, I mean, I, I could, I could do exactly what's been stated. I could specifically ask that every one of these nine bullets be moved to submission. And technically, Counselor Croson is right, that could be done without a vote. But I guess I have a little bit of respect for my colleagues, and I thought that going around doing it my way, by getting it to vote, and getting it to change, so that we do this right the next time. So, I'll let this one go by, but you've obviously heard my intention and the point I'm trying to make.
Okay, thank you. And I think it's, uh, thank you for raising the issue. Uh, we shouldn't have too many reports from standing policy committee meetings until the new council meets, so, uh, if the committees aren't meeting in the summer, there won't be too many reports in September. So, it may be an issue that's resolved at that time. With that, we're now back to the main consent agenda resolution from Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Uh, I will just call for the vote.
Sorry, Mister Mayor, I have one more amendment, it's Joe.
Go ahead.
I'd like the consent agenda to be split, where you have the further be it resolved that council adopt the recommendations contained in the following standing policy committee reports be voted on separately. Thank you.
Okay, so we would take that section out and vote on the remainder of the resolution, including the first readings and the public hearing to be scheduled. So, uh, we'll separate that item and vote on it separately. On the, on all the other items, uh, we'll ca- we'll call the question, all in favor?
Worship, sorry, I'm just not clear, I apologize. If I could have clarity on what's requested? Ryan, do you have what's requested on?
Yeah, the fourth paragraph. Further be it resolved that City Council adopt the recommendations contained in the following standing policy committee reports has been separated out and will be voted on separately. Now we're voting on the rest of the resolution unless there's an objection from council. I hear none. All in favor? Are any opposed? That is unanimous. Now we'll go to the section that has been set out, also moved by Deputy Mayor Campbell. Further be it resolved that City Council adopt the recommendations contained in the following standing policy committee reports, and they're listed on the screen. Okay, any further debate? And maybe we'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Higgin?
Opposed.
Counselor Morrow?
Opposed.
Counselor Miyashiro?
In favor.
Counselor Parker?
Favor.
Acting Mayor Croson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
In favor.
Mayor Spearman?
Opposed.
Counselor Carlson?
In favor.
Counselor Kaufman?
In favor.
Six to three, that's carried.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll go on to the agenda. I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Croson. Uh, adoption of agenda, that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on June the twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one be adopted as presented, including all communications as submitted by the city clerk. Acting Mayor Croson, okay, city clerk, are there any amendments?
Uh, yes, Mayor Spearman, I have four revisions to this agenda today. I have three additions to the in-camera session. The first being, uh, committee matter one, verbal, that's gonna be ten point two. Committee matter two, verbal, that will be ten point three. Uh, information process matter, verbal, that'll be ten point four. As well, I have a withdrawal request from administration to item four point one, the green and inclusive community building grant opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll change the resolution to, uh, read that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council, uh, on June twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one be adopted as amended, including all communications as submitted by the city clerk. Acting Mayor Croson?
I will call the question.
Question has been called, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none.
We do have one hand up from Counselor Carlson.
Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Counselor Carlson, sorry, Mayor Spearman, I was just trying to get a question about the, um, item four point one that's being polled. Um, I, I noticed that the, the deadline for applications on that is like July sixth, or are we just saying that's dead in the water, or is it still to be considered? Uh, I'm sorry if I'm putting you on the spot, cuz it's gonna be polled, but I'm just, uh, I, some clarity on, on what's going on with that, cuz it's...
Mister Dalton, or designate?
Thanks.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll defer to Ms. Trent.
Thank you. Counselor Carlson, um, when we initially reviewed the opportunity and evaluated the grant, um, we didn't have the, this specific information that we required in order to be able to quantify our eligibility for the grant funding. And upon receiving more detailed information in the application, we, uh, concluded very quickly that the proposed project did not meet the necessary requirements to qualify it. And in addition to that, some of the specific fields within the application are, um, items in which we haven't fully quantified yet in terms of specific project costs, so at this time, um, our expectation has gone from a seven million dollar investment from the city for a twenty-three million dollar project to potentially having to fund the entire project. Um, we are going to regroup and reevaluate the potential to incorporate green strategies with respect to this project, and we will, we expect to return to council with an alternative solution to, to trying to active, uh, actively pursue greener strategies with respect to this project and program.
Thank you very much, Ms. Trent, and Mister Dalton, I appreciate that response, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Thank you. Counselor Kaufman?
Uh, sorry, Mayor Spearman, just on that then as well, um, it's an operational consideration. I recognize that there may be, well, there is a requirement for a twenty percent funding from the municipality. Um, is an application still going, or application still going to be, um, submitted prior to the sixth, I think it is? Uh, or, uh, are we just going to be participating now in the open, uh, aspect of, of applications?
We, we expect, once we reevaluate the program and the opportunities from a green strategy perspective, to segment the pro- the project in a way to see what we qualify for, so we'll have to reevaluate whether or not, um, we can, um, evaluate the project in a way that would qualify us, um, for this specific grant, and potentially alternative grant funding.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Thank you. So we've passed the agenda. Uh, we will reorder the agenda. I believe the medical officer of, of health for the South Zone is available at two fifteen, which is in five minutes. Uh, then we will do four point three, five point one, and six point one. So at this time, we may deal with a couple of submissions if we have time to do so. Uh, we'll move to five point two, uh, transit accessory vehicle donation request. Do you have the resolution? Thank you. I have a resolution from Counselor Carlson, accessory ride transit vehicle donation request. Be it resolved that City Council approve the donation of a two thousand and ten ARBOC, Arbock, low-floor para-transit bus to the Green Acres Foundation. Counselor Carlson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman, I believe all the informations in front of council, this sort of went to administration as a request from the Green Acres, uh, Foundation, uh, for another bus to help transport seniors around our communities. Um, I believe administration, uh, said this is outside of our, um, process or, um, um, policy, but council can consider it, so it's here for council to consider. If there's any questions, uh, Counselor Parker and I sit on Green Acres Board and can answer some questions. I also believe Ms. Lori McLean, and I saw, had popped in, she may be able to answer if there's any questions from my colleagues.
Counselor Kaufman?
Uh, sorry, Mayor Spearman, that was a hand-up hangover from previous, uh, issue.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I see none. Please proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman, uh, just briefly, this is, uh, a, a bus that is surplus to our needs. I believe it's, uh, surplus has, uh, become obsolete material, I believe it's, it's called. Uh, Green Acres has expressed an interest, uh, in using this bus, refurbishing it, uh, to transport seniors in our communities to various events and functions, shopping, et cetera. Uh, we've done similar donations for Green Acres in the past, I believe, as well as, um, uh, for Rotary, and also Migos, uh, project, and so, um, I'm hoping council will, um, support this.
Okay, question has been called, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none. We move to five point three. Okay, I wonder if the deputy mayor can read the resolution?
Certainly. Um, this is, uh, from, uh, Mayor Spearman. Be it resolved that City Council approve the payment of the two thousand twenty-one, or twenty-twenty-one annual membership effective January first, twenty-twenty-one, to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, with the Highway Three Twinning Development Association in the amount of forty-five hundred dollars to be funded from council contingencies. Mister Mayor?
Thank you. Um, City Council, the City of Lethbridge, has been a member of the Highway Three Twinning Development Association for the last three years. Uh, we've paid the annual fee. Uh, the organization has been successful in its, uh, advocacy efforts in obtaining, uh, about more than forty kilometers of Highway Three for twinning. Uh, there's benefits to the City of Lethbridge and all communities along Highway Three from, uh, from the twinning, from the point of view of safety, and from the point of view of economic development. So, uh, my recommendation is that, uh, City Council continue its membership in the Highway Three Twinning Development Association and pay the twenty-twenty-one annual membership fee. Open to any questions from council. There are no questions? Okay, then...
I would imagine, uh, we, is there any debate to the next part? Seeing none, I'll, uh, lead that to your close, Mister Mayor.
Okay, uh, I, simply, I think there's a benefit to the City of Lethbridge, and, uh, it's a way that we collaborate with other communities along Highway Three for our mutual benefit. I'd urge council to support the resolution.
Question's been called, anyone opposed? I see none.
Okay, I think everyone is, that's unanimous. Okay, is, uh... Okay. All right, we'll go to four point three now. Uh, presentation from Alberta Health Services South Zone. With us today, we have Dr. Mila Luchak. Welcome, Dr. Luchak.
Thank you, good afternoon, thank you, worship and council, for allowing me to speak today. Um, I think, I believe I have some slides there that will be posted. Um, I'll just wait until they're posted, it looks like they are. So my name is, uh, Dr. Mila Luchak, and I work as a medical officer of health for the South Zone, um, with, uh, Alberta Health Services, and I'm excited today to do this presentation to give you a COVID-nineteen update, uh, and help you with, uh, decision-making regarding, uh, what's happening moving forward, especially particularly around restrictions. Uh, next slide, please. So first of all, what I'm gonna start off with is just describing, uh, ways to prevent infection and spread of disease in general. Uh, masks are part of a toolset that is used to prevent, uh, infection and transmitting disease to others, and this could be applicable to COVID-nineteen among other viruses, including influenza. But wearing a mask is, is very beneficial in that it's a safe means of preventing potentially infectious respiratory droplets from spreading to others, uh, when one is talking, laughing, um, or coughing, for example. This is especially important when people are not able to actually physically distance. However, I just want to highlight that it's also important to consider other factors that prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen. And these include things like immunization rates and uptake, practicing good hand hygiene, uh, ensuring people stay home, uh, when they're sick. Uh, individuals are also able to do, uh, a risk assessment, so screening, so personal risk assessment in terms of, uh, if they're ill, they don't go to work, or if they, uh, notice that with their children, for example, notice that with their children, for example, that they then don't go to school or daycare. Um, and also making sure that people get tested if they're symptomatic, um, or is directed through, uh, public health direction depending on the situation. So, um, I think that it's important to highlight that all of these are very important factors that we've learned throughout the pandemic. And we want to try to make sure that we, uh, continue to, uh, utilize these tools as we move forward, um, throughout the coming months. Uh, next slide, please. So I wanted to highlight some data here for you around vaccination rates locally. And so this, uh, this map is taken from, uh, Alberta Health and it's updated according to June 27th. And this is for first doses. And you'll see in the middle there, the area that's highlighted more in that darker orange, um, that is where we have our north, south, and west portions of Lethbridge. And then surrounding that, of course, with our Lethbridge County and local geographic areas, and it kind of expands beyond that. So I wanted to highlight that for our Lethbridge city areas of the north, south, and the west, um, for first doses, ages 12 and older, we have over 70% uptake for that first dose. And that translates to about 65% among all ages. And then in comparison to the Lethbridge County area surrounding that for first dose, we have about just over 55% uh, in terms of uptake for those who are age, uh, 12 and older. And that again translates to about 44% of all ages. Um, amongst these local geographic areas, I will just highlight that there are some differences in terms of uptake amongst particular demographic groups. So for example, seniors, you'll see that they have about 90% in some cases in terms of uptake for that first dose. If you look at, uh, towards the center bottom left, there's the Carson-Kinney Local Geographic Area. And that area is not reflected as high, as having as high proportion of vaccine uptake. However, please note that the data reflected in this map on Alberta Health does not take into, uh, account the data that would be taken through Indigenous Services Canada. So their vaccine rollout and uptake, uh, in some of our First Nations communities have actually been very, very good. Next slide, please. Oh, back up one, one slide, please. Perfect. So vaccination rates for second dose, this is the same map, but now we're looking at the second doses. And again, I've tried to showcase here, now we're looking at Lethbridge West and South in terms of having that darker orange color that indicates the proportion of vaccine uptake, um, within those regions. And so for second doses, we're actually seeing over 50% among those who are age 12 and older, and that's in the West and the South. And this has been updated according to June 27th. Um, I don't think there were any updates as of, uh, 2 o'clock today, but this is from June 27th. Um, when you look at the Lethbridge County region, vaccine uptake for two doses is just over 35%, and that's amongst 12 and up for eligibility. Again, I will note that seniors, uh, particularly with any of these local geographic areas, they are reaching nearly 88% in some of these areas for second doses as well. So that's really encouraging to see. And the areas that have lower uptake would be, um, MD of Tabor as well as County of 40 Mile. Um, and so those are the, the two areas that have lower uptake according to the data that's provided here. Next slide, please. So one thing I do want to highlight around all of this information that I've been presenting so far is, um, the concept of herd immunity, or also known as population immunity. And so really, that's the indirect protection, uh, from an infectious disease that, um, happens when a population is immune either through vaccination, or it's immunity that's developed through previous infection. However, it is best to achieve herd immunity through vaccination, uh, by not allowing a disease to spread through the population. So the reason why I'm talking about this is that it's especially important as some individuals cannot get vaccinated. They're either less than 12 years of age, for example, or those with, uh, alert allergies or contraindications, so means that they cannot get the vaccine for some reason. So it's important to, that many eligible people as possible actually receive two doses of vaccine, uh, preventing any further major outbreaks of COVID-19, uh, protecting those that maybe cannot get the vaccine, um, and also making sure that we, uh, prevent any sort of poor outcomes amongst population. Um, in areas with our lower vaccine uptake, um, we may continue to see outbreaks of COVID-19. These are also areas that have aligned or, uh, mirrored with or up for childhood vaccines as well, where in the past, we may have seen some vaccine preventable disease outbreaks in, in, in the past. So next slide, please. Perfect. Thanks. So moving forward, a few considerations that I just want to highlight, uh, to council today. So I want to reiterate that, um, there are several ways to prevent infection and spreading COVID-19 in the community. So as I mentioned, hand hygiene practices, staying home when sick, and getting vaccinated, all of these things should continue going forward for people. Um, individuals may prefer to wear a mask or have, they may have an underlying health condition that puts them at greater risk. And they should be able to make that personal assessment and that personal choice about wanting to wear a mask. There may also be opportunities for, uh, businesses, workplaces, and organizations in higher-risk settings, uh, such as a senior center, for example, um, to continue with a process for screening for symptoms and having the ability for people to actually wear a mask. And this may also apply to other settings, for example, first responders who are typically involved in a point of care risk assessment and that they need to determine a situation in which appropriate personal protective equipment is to be worn. It is also important to consider, uh, moving forward that, um, people do move throughout, uh, the local counties and the local geographic areas, and they don't just stay in one particular area, as you know. And also just noting as well, according to Dr. Hinshaw's updates even from last week, that the province has mentioned that masks are required in particular higher-risk settings, so public transit, as well as any type of rideshare programs. And I think overall, it will take some time to adjust as we move forward and we start to see, uh, restrictions being lifted as soon as this week and into the summer months. Um, so next slide, please. That's all I have in terms of content. Um, I'm happy to address any questions, uh, from council today. Thanks.
Thank you. We do have questions. I'm going to start with Acting Mayor Crowson.
Thank you, Dr. Luchak, for your presentation. I was speaking this weekend to a mother who has an immune compromised child who is under 12 and can't get vaccinated. And her concern, I'm sure is one you're hearing, uh, do we have vaccination rates high enough that the kids who are under 12 and cannot get vaccinated would be protected as we move ahead?
Thank you. That's a very excellent question. And, uh, at this point in time, from work with colleagues, uh, both locally and, um, provincially through Alberta Health Services, there's not a lot of great data so far, um, that studies are currently in the works in terms of determining what is that population immunity or that herd immunity number that needs to be achieved in order to protect a lot of our vulnerable populations, such as the story you just outlined. So that data is something that has been looked into globally and continues to do so as we start to see, uh, more people being vaccinated globally as well. Um, but I don't have a percentage or a number of what that population immunity should look like in order for that to happen at this time.
So we're just not sure. Um, is this virus exhibiting seasonality? I mean, right now, we're seeing an outbreak in Australia, so it tends to, it looks like it's acting like, you know, the flu in other years when the influenza seasonal. Um, is this, is this exhibiting seasonality so that, can we say that the numbers we're seeing right now are seasonal? Or are they vaccine-related, or is it just too hard to know right now?
Another great question in that I think it is hard to determine for a few reasons. One would be that we are seeing, um, our vaccine uptake right now is, is coming along with both first doses and second doses, and preferably seeing that more people also have second doses. It also depends on what the season looks like in terms of people's behavior. So are more people congregating outside as opposed to indoors, for example, in the winter where we don't know if we'll then see more transmission based on people's, uh, personal and environmental behaviors? Um, so I think it will be interesting to see what happens in the fall when we also see other viruses like influenza that still typically are quite seasonal. Um, so I think in combination, that story will be told closer to the fall.
And last question, if I may, is your department prepping for a fourth wave this fall?
So in terms of public health and what we do, um, as part of, uh, the work that I do in Alberta Health Services, South Zone, um, we are always preparing for any sort of change in terms of our numbers and if that happens. So it's important to always have resources in place, make sure that we know who those people are to draw on if needed, should we start to see a change in those numbers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Thank you. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Uh, thank you, Dr. Luchak, uh, for joining us today. Thanks for the presentation and, and information. A quick question because there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I do know that, uh, early in the pandemic, the science around masking was changing rather rapidly, which likely caused a lot of the confusion. But some of the comments I hear from, um, well, e- even political, uh, types, is that masks are useless and that they actually contribute, uh, to the spread of the virus. In your presentation, masks are at the top of the list, ways to prevent infection, spread of disease. Can you, can you clarify once and for all, are, are masks useful? Do they help? Have they been one of the main tools in helping us achieve the numbers we're seeing right now, the low numbers?
Thank you. So I have masks at the top of the list in that slide, but what I would like to reiterate is that, uh, masks are part of that toolbox or that tool set that I mentioned. Uh, it's still very important to consider all of the other factors like hand hygiene and appropriate hand hygiene. And when people need to stay home when they're sick as well, or they're feeling unwell, all of those factors in conjunction along with vaccination are really important to, um, controlling, uh, preventing the spread of disease. Masks are also part of that tool set, but they also have to be worn in a way that are actually effective. So making sure that they're placed appropriately on one's face, um, that, that you're not reusing the same mask and never cleaning it, or if you have a disposable mask, that you're actually grabbing a new mask that's clean. So there are certain ways of making sure that you're optimizing the use of that mask so that you're not actually putting people at risk by using it.
But they are an effective tool if used properly. Is that correct?
They, they are a safe way of protecting against illness in conjunction with a lot of those other factors is discussed. Yes.
Thank you. And further to that, if I can, is, is there not as much about protecting yourself? Um, as they are about protecting others? So that you, you may be asymptomatic if you've got a mask on and you're talking, what our prime minister called it, speaking moistly at one point. Um, if you're, that is, that is what, it's not so much about protecting yourself, it's being kind and compassionate and protecting others. Is that correct?
That is correct in that it is protecting others. It's a form of, uh, source control if, uh, if an individual is shedding the virus and they maybe don't have symptoms and they're, they're wearing that mask to prevent that from happening. Um, but I also think that it's also part of that personal choice, and people are going to have that feeling of, are they comfortable going in public, uh, without a mask at this point? And that's going to be quite a personal choice. And if they feel that they are at risk still in the community, because maybe they do have some sort of underlying condition, then they should still be able to, uh, make that choice and wear that mask also to protect themselves if that's what they choose to do.
Thank you for that. My, my second question, and thank you, Counselor Crowson, for asking some of the, the more scientific ones, um, which I've ticked off my list. My question is around the Delta variant. Uh, our numbers in first dose are very good, second dose hopefully will be as good. Um, but there are countries that were ahead of us. I'm looking at UK, Israel. Uh, they have seen that the Delta variant, or what do they call it now, the Delta Plus even? Um, is, is running rampant, and they are reinstituting their mask. Uh, by, not bylaws, but mandates, uh, because of that. Is that a situation that, that, uh, Alberta Health is monitoring and is aware of and planning for?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I can't speak to Alberta Health because, um, I'm with Alberta Health Services in terms of the data that I am able to see, uh, with my work in South Zone. Um, but essentially, it's, it really important to consider the different contexts of the different countries in terms of when they rolled out their vaccine and also which age groups were covered at that point in time. So we were able to actually see a lot of our younger, uh, population, uh, be eligible and get that vaccine through various means through Alberta Health Services fairly early on, which is reassuring in that we have tried to get more of that younger group vaccinated as soon as possible. So it really depends on what was the approach with that country, and I can't speak to what was done in those other countries, but it does, uh, take into account that there are differences to be aware of.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Counselor Mayor Searle?
Um, thank you, Mayor Spearman. Thank you, uh, Dr. Luchak, for coming today. Um, just kind of follow up on what, uh, Counselor Carlson was asking, uh, regarding variants. Some information of Health Canada and the World Health Organization this week was, was that, especially when the variant occurs, um, they were, both those bodies were recommending to go back to your, uh, regular indoor restrictions. Um, can, can you talk a bit about the variants in Alberta and, and how, where those are most prevalent and, and what it's like for us in the South?
Absolutely. So, um, over the last few weeks to months, the UK variant has been, um, one of the more predominant variants that we have detected, and now we're starting to see that increase in the Delta variant. However, we have noticed a real drop in the overall cases to begin with, uh, in Alberta, but particularly in South Zone. Um, over the last few days, we have only seen a handful of cases in South Zone, and we have not seen that Delta variant amongst those low numbers of cases in South Zone. So that is reassuring, um, in terms of where we're at, at this point in time. Um, I can't predict what will happen in the next few weeks to months in terms of how the Delta variant will, will act locally, um, compared to other global areas. Um, but it is reassuring that we have seen our numbers have dropped overall in terms of case counts in South Zone.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, worship, and thanks, Dr. Luchak, again. I, I just, um, you know, we, we're, we're here today to deal with, uh, repealing of the mask bylaw. So that's, that's sort of the big issue, uh, the big question. And I, 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 I always defer to people who are experts, and you are, you are among the people who are experts, and I know you've got, you would have an opinion. I, I just, I, and I'm just going to come out and ask it. Is it a good idea right now to repeal a mask bylaw, or is it a little bit premature? Uh, if, if we go ahead with the bylaw, or if we repeal it, are there numbers to suggest that, you know, we're going in one direction or another, that, like, are there benchmarks to, uh, where we should go back to having a, a mask bylaw? So there's a lot to, uh, ingest there, and I just, I just need to hear from an expert. That's what I want to hear.
Thanks. Yeah, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak today. And what I was hoping today was to actually provide you with, uh, that presentation that provides as many facts and as much information as possible to help you as elected officials to make this decision, which is, uh, a challenging one, um, in the context of what is being done provincially as well as what's being done, um, globally, really. Um, so I want you to know that the information I provided, masking is one way of preventing spread of illness, but there are also many of those other aspects that really need to be, um, part of the package and that people are addressing those and learning and using those skills that we learned through the pandemic of over a year and a half, that people are actually still, um, abiding by those other concepts, including staying home when sick, which is really important, and just getting the vaccine. Because now we have very effective vaccines that can actually be our, uh, tool that can really prevent illness and further spread, especially when we compare ourselves to last summer when we didn't have access to those types of vaccines. Now we have safe, effective vaccines that are being closely monitored and have really made a difference, uh, locally in South Zone as well as in Alberta in terms of preventing further spread.
So it's fair to say that one of the, the greatest things that all Albertans, especially in Lethbridge, because that's where we're dealing with, would be get the vaccine? That would be a good.
Absolutely. If people can, uh, go and get that second dose of vaccine, that will really be our way of trying to, um, prevent any further spread, especially with that Delta variant and COVID. Um, and also, again, I just want to reiterate that individuals that feel that they are at greater risk, or they feel that need to wear a mask, that option or they feel that need to wear a mask, that option is certainly something that they can pursue.
And and just to the the second part of the question about are, is there a benchmark of numbers of cases that would thus would uh sort of be the flag to say we need to go back to to masking if this is repealed?
So the benchmark that you're referring to, uh, that's not something that I can speak to specifically. That would be something that we would work through um Alberta Health Services, not only locally, but um with across the province. Um, and also working with our Alberta health partners to determine at what point would we be considering um if if there are any further measures that need to be taken. Um, but I think at this point, with really effective vaccines and utilizing a lot of the tools that we already have talked about, I think that those are really important to emphasize uh going forward throughout the summer and the fall. And also keeping in mind that we are uh continuing to work and address other viruses like uh influenza in the fall. We always have to be cognizant of what that will look like and how do we actually continue to have measures in place for viruses like that.
Thank you. I really appreciate you being here today. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Parker.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Luchak, for uh being here today and answering these questions. And um my first question is to you. Obviously, about two to two and a half months ago, the rates in Lethbridge were close to five hundred and fifty or so active cases, give or take five or ten, and that was kind of like at our all-time high. And that's when uh mandatory masking was in place. Uh, the city, of course, had their bylaws in place. And then there was a huge, huge push by the province to bring on vaccinations. Uh, it was to a point where people, certain age categories, you know, fifty plus, and then it went from forty up, and then at one point went thirty up. And then, of course, the next round was everyone from twelve up. And there was a drastic drop. So here's the common denominator here was vaccinations, huge, huge uptake. And our numbers went from five hundred and fifty to as of five yesterday. So a decrease of, well, I don't know my math very well, but of close to ninety-nine percent decrease. Provincially, we were at twenty-five thousand two and a half months ago, give or take a thousand. And now we're at close to twelve hundred, so probably a ninety percent decrease. So is it the masking or is it the vaccination that is the real key role here? Because the reason I ask that is because we had masks before, but the numbers kept on going up. So is is our, should we be putting all our weight in vaccinations, vaccinations as a city and as a province?
Uh, thank you for that excellent question as well. Um, it is a very interesting observation that you've highlighted about the the difference of what vaccines that are effective can do um to really reduce those COVID nineteen numbers and just looking over time what has happened. And so absolutely vaccinations and looking at how we can improve uh different reasons around vaccine hesitancy are really important. And so vaccine hesitancy is when people delay or refuse to get a vaccine. And that could be for a number of different reasons, and that's something that um teams with Alberta Health Services have been trying to address both locally and provincially. So it may be around confidence, it may be around trust in particular groups. Uh, convenience is another reason why some people may not be able to get the vaccine. And convenience refers to access uh in particular, or maybe it's even um when they're able to get the vaccine evening versus day at a clinic um based on jobs. And also looking at complacency, because um some people may believe that they're not at risk of getting COVID and what would happen to them. So that's another reason why some individuals may be um hesitant to to getting vaccines. So really, uh, work has to be uh continued to try to make sure that we address not only first doses, but really reiterate the need to get that second dose of vaccine uh among the population.
Thank you very much for that answer. I appreciate that, and I'll kudo you. That's an excellent answer. Um, my second question to you is in regards to every, there's regions as Alberta Health. You guys have different regions. You have the north, you have the south, and there's numerous ones in between. If numbers did suddenly grow in a certain area like they did in northern Alberta near uh Fort McMurray, you put it almost, Alberta Health put a special watch in that area. If we didn't have this mask mandate in law line and numbers suddenly drastically up, do you guys have the the resources to implement a certain masking area or area of concern where regulations could be put in place by yourself, not a municipality, to our area? Do you have that jurisdiction to do that? That's my question.
Yeah, so another good question in that um this type of question really depends on, again, the jurisdiction, the the population of concern that we're talking about, what would happen. Um, it also depends on um a number of factors, including how people move throughout the province or through LGAs or counties. And it also depends on um enforcement and how how would you enforce particular measures or restrictions going forward when you're talking about a very specific area? And so those are a lot of considerations that um would have to be taken as well as feasibility um in order to consider that. Um, I think in my role and and with Alberta Health Services, we continue to look at the numbers. How do we do continuous contact tracing and uh look at people who are have tested positive and try to manage through case investigations? That is where we have spent a lot of our priority time and will continue to do so and while we're monitoring cases um throughout the next few weeks to months. So I just wanted to highlight those considerations because those are important whenever thinking about what would happen with a particular population or a particular area.
And thank you. And my last question, if I, Mr. Mayor, if I may, my last question. Um, I always believe in being an expert at listening to the experts. And you guys have done a tremendous amount of work in research and analysis and looking at trends moving forward and also looking at the past. Do and you guys, not being, when I say you guys, rather, you are individuals within Alberta Health through Dr. Henshaw's office are in support of removing the mandatory order of masking in Alberta. Am I correct on that?
So that mandate is a provincial mandate that uh is being reviewed for July first. So in my role with Alberta Health Services, that's not uh something that I um am a part of.
But that is the 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 position of Dr. Henshaw at this moment, am I correct?
And that's uh what Dr. Henshaw has highlighted in her, um, actually, she may have media interviews today, but she did last Tuesday, and that's what she highlighted in her interview.
Thank you very much.
Last week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Kaufman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spurman. Uh, thank you, Dr. Luchak, for your time and for um coming and and presenting this information. Appreciate that. Um, just maybe on the point of of Dr. Hin, uh, Dr. Henshaw, can you please just sort of enlighten us as to um the information that she had provided to, I guess it was the um uh COVID Advisory Council or whatever, the group of provincial politicians who were making the decision? Um, could you just talk a little bit about the information that she provided to reassure them that uh removing a mask uh uh order um was the um prudent thing to do?
So um unfortunately, I'm not part of those conversations. Um, it's it's that particular table. Um, so whatever was being provided through her uh media last week is really what um I would reiterate today.
Sorry, I sorry, I guess I was operating under the assumption I had I had read through media at one of the press conferences that she'd stated she had shared, she at least had shared the information with the um with the MOHs in the various regions. So just trying to get an an insight as to to um the perspective that she was presenting or the direction that she was coming from.
Yeah, and so the information that I would be aware of is um is mostly around that publicly available information already in terms of masking of where it would be required, and that is the public transport as well as the ride share programs. Um, and it also would be, um, there were some considerations around uh continuing care in certain acute care sites. But those are very specific that we don't have um all of the details yet on that. Um, so that is something that will probably be coming over the next few days. And actually, as we look at those areas where the masking is still required, so public transit and um ride share programs, how is that actually going to look over time? That's something that is still being uh discussed at the table.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Luchak. Thank you, Mayor Spurman.
Thank you. Could we uh have the the maps on the screen, please? From this presentation? Thank you. Um, thank you, Dr. Luchak, for your presentations today. Uh, when we look at uh how, you know, how we protect our citizens and uh what is our role as a municipality and what our mask law does, it's it's really designed to protect those on the front line who may be exposed. So we have employees at City Hall who deal with the public, we have retail stores. We have businesses where people are dealing with the public all the time. And of course, Lethbridge is a service center. And uh many people are coming into Lethbridge for those services and dealing with those frontline people. When it comes to protecting each other, and we talk about the concept of herd immunity that you had highlighted, generally, it means people who are fully vaccinated. Is that not correct? So having both shots. And we're seeing, while the the numbers are looking very good in Lethbridge, uh, we're still not at we're uh provincially, we seem to be saying seventy percent must have one shot. And we exceed that in the city of Lethbridge, but not necessarily in the in the area all around Lethbridge. Uh, but we definitely are under the seventy percent in terms of the second shot. And uh so for us to be protecting each other, uh, there's two concerns. Uh, we're not, we're not at what's commonly accepted as a hu- herd immunity level in terms of full vaccination. And secondly, we have a concern that the areas around Lethbridge may not be at the same as we are in Lethbridge. So in terms of protecting people who are most at risk and most exposed, we're not yet at that level. Is that correct?
So getting to that level, um, thank you for your question. Uh, getting to that level really does, the optimal level of protection really is with those two doses of uh a vac, yeah, COVID vaccine. Um, so that's when we would be able to achieve that optimal herd immunity is when people do have a higher level of having two doses of the vaccine. And so you're correct in that that would be um our best case or optimal scenario is to have uh continue to push getting that second dose of vaccine.
Okay, thank you. And I guess we do, we are concerned about mixed medical opinions. So the former medical officer of health is very concerned. Uh, Mr. Dr. James Talbot believes removing ahead too quickly. Uh, we don't seem to get consensus uh from people with medical qualifications uh and clarity. So as non-educated people having to make political decisions, it's challenging for us to dissect, to uh basically uh look at the information and from different medical experts, which seems to conflict. How do we proceed when we have Dr. James Talbert saying it's senselessly aggressive and reckless? And our current medical officer of health saying that uh we should, it's okay to move forward and there'll be minimal risk?
Thank you. I think that's a really challenging one. Um, and I appreciate that it is hard to interpret a lot of the data out there when there is a lot of different sources of information. Um, and it's also very, um, there's lots of jargon and a lot of the conversational um uh information out there in order to help you make an informed choice. So I think what will be helpful going forward is um having an ongoing relationship with, for example, uh, myself or the medical officer of health in the South Zone that has um that local context and local data that can help you going forward on this issue among other issues. Um, and also knowing that um I can't really speak to the the um the histories of uh the uh different CMOHs and what, how they're involved and and how they're involved, actually. Um, but what I can do is I can provide you the information that we collect locally and um ways that we can work together to provide the best-case local context for you.
Thank you. Counselor Carlson.
I mean, pardon me. Thank you, Mayor Spurman. I thank you again, Dr. Luchak. Uh, just a question I need some help with, and I think what I heard you say earlier in response to some of my questions and and in your presentation was that that masking was effective. It was a fairly um simple, easy way um to protect uh others from infection. Um, it's a a kind, in my view, it's it's just kind and compassionate to look after your friends and neighbors in that way. That being said, uh, it's being removed, and yes, many of us have uh got double-dosed. Uh, many of us will take, continue to to keep distant, good hy- hand hygiene, so you say? All the, all the right things. My concern is for those who cannot um get the vaccine for whatever reason, whether they're in certain chemo treatments, et cetera, et cetera. They they're just unable to. Um, masking, in my opinion, was a way to protect them, to help them, to say, yep. Um, we we know there's some folks out there who who cannot, for whatever reason, get the vaccine. Um, and they they still need to do their daily tasks. They still need to get out and about. And so my my concern is they're being put at risk. Or we're saying, nope, you you don't matter. You stay home and do nothing. Can you help me? Is there something for those folks who are unable to get the protection at this time for whatever reason? Is there something they can do? I- is there a mask they can wear that will give them surety of protection? Is there anything you can suggest for them? Because those are the folks I'm concerned about, those of us who are I'll say it smart, are getting and and worried about getting through this, are getting the vaccine. We're we're single doses, we're double doses, we're doing our darnedest. Um, how can we help protect those, the the most vulnerable folks? I- is there something we can do? Is there something they can do?
Absolutely. So thank you for your question. I think in terms of what we can do, it's really still reiterating uh trying to encourage people to get that second dose. If you haven't already gotten the first dose, make sure you get the first dose and then a subsequent second dose of vaccine. Um, making sure that when I showed that second slide of all of those other measures to try to prevent infection spread, that we all still take that to heart, that we're still being mindful of washing our hands and staying home when sick, because those are things that we can all do to protect others in the community who are more vulnerable or have conditions where they are more at risk. In terms of those people that are at risk, um, they, I I still think that it's important that they have the opportunity to wear a mask, should they want to, uh, because there's still that added layer of protection that they can provide to themselves. Um, also, still thinking about some of those areas in the community. I kind of referred to some certain uh organizations um or community areas where maybe we do see um a higher level of people that are more at risk, that those organizations may still want to consider that as part of their uh own protocols in terms of allowing uh people to wear a mask. Maybe they have hand sanitizer available as well going forward. All of that is still something that we can apply, whether in those more higher-risk settings, but also still thinking about the greater public in terms of all of those measures that we should still continue to do because we learned them so well over the last year and a half.
So um I guess what you're suggesting is that folks who are unable to vaccinate for whatever reason, masks will still be helpful for them. But by and large, they just need to avoid avoid uh community activities uh unless those community groups are saying, nope, we still want you to wear a mask. I've got a friend who's organizing a a music event, and they're saying, no, uh, we're still, if you're here, you're going to be masked up because we want everyone in the community to feel safe and be safe. So uh art, there's really no magic, magic solution. I I guess it's a personal choice and people will have to avoid certain things, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moro.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. My hands down. Thank you.
Are there any further questions from council? I have one last one. I believe it was the Canada Health Council today, I may have the name wrong, said that uh full immunity at seventy-five percent should uh would be a a target before relaxing regulations. How do, how does Alberta Health work with the uh the federal health officials? Do they have common standards? Do they have common standards?
Thank you. Yeah, so actually, last Friday, the Public Health Agency of Canada did issue a risk matrix that's color-coded. And it does provide guidance to people that they can use, look up personally as to if they are partially vaccinated or fully vaccinated, what types of activities should they be thinking about, where they should maybe consider wearing a mask or where they should wear a mask to protect themselves but also to protect others. So the Public Health Agency of Canada has provided that guidance on Friday, last Friday. If that's something of interest for you to review, I can, happy to share that link with you. And that is also very helpful in terms of providing all Canadians some guidance on what they should or maybe should be more careful about doing.
Okay. And in terms of the link between Alberta's recommendations and the federal recommendations, how do we get to some commonality?
So that's something that we would typically work through. Alberta Health Services would connect with Alberta Health on working with some of that higher-level federal guidance as well. But it has been issued publicly already for individuals to look on the internet. So that's really our key, is that it's already publicly facing. And we usually work through individually in each province in terms of sharing that information so that we're able to utilize that well in the province.
Okay. Thank you. One last call for questions from council. I see no further questions from council. And certainly, Dr. Luchek, thank you very much for sharing your time and your expertise with us today, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a resolution from Acting Mayor Croson, Medical Office of Health for Alberta Health Services South Zone, masking information. Be it resolved that council receive this item as information. Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Thank you very much again, Dr. Luchek, for all the information you provided us today and for being willing to come in and present to council. And on that, I will call the question unless there's anybody who wants to debate information.
Are there any questions? Any debate? Okay. Question's been called, all in favor? Thank you, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay, we now go to five point one. I have a resolution from Deputy Mayor Campbell. Letter from Local Specialists in Respiratory and Critical Care Medicine, mask mandate. Be it resolved that council receive the letter, attachment one, as information. Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Thank you, Your Worship. I would imagine all of council has read the letter. And I don't, I think it's pretty self-explanatory what their intent is. Unless there's any other questions, I will call for the vote on receiving the information.
Thank you, Counselor Parker.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank these doctors, these professionals within the respiratory medical field for not only their letter, but their guidance on this. Some of them, I think one doctor in particular wrote us a while back, almost two months ago, in regards to some of the issues he has had with his patients and the concern he's had in regards to the provincial orders that have been in place. So I want to thank him for that. I always, everyone gets kind of stick of me saying, but you should always be an expert, listening to the experts. And no one has a bigger stake than you folks. The people that deal with these people who have respiratory issues on a daily basis, you see it each and every day. And you understand the significance of good medical advice, but more importantly, following good medical advice. So I want to thank you for that letter. I hope it was read by my colleagues, but more importantly, the community. And I think it was noted in the media, but I want to thank you. It helps a lot in helping us make good decisions on behalf of our community.
Thank you. Counselor Higgins.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman, and thank you very much for coming in and for, turn off this there, for the letter that was supplied, I truly appreciate it. We've heard about this herd immunity, and I'm not sure who can answer this. And what exactly does that mean? And how does it apply here, for example? And I don't know if Dr. Wild, if you wanted to come to the mic. Just... Yeah, you both, if you both want to sit there, that's... Or you, one at the mic if you want.
Okay. Take that one?
Yeah, I think, so Dr. Lee, I'll be a specialist in respiratory medicine. I also have a role within AHS, but I speak as a specialist in respiratory medicine, not from an AHS side today. Thank you, Your Worship, and honorable council members. Herd immunity is different for every virus. So we can look dependent on what our efficacy for vaccines are. For example, flu vaccination would be forty to sixty percent effective any given year. We've been blessed with a great effective Covid mRNA vaccines from Pfizer, Moderna that give us excellent vaccination efficacy in the ninety percent range for those who are fully vaccinated. So similar respiratory viruses have typically been in the seventy percent range to achieve herd immunity. And that's looking at various efficacy of the vaccines. So we have very effective Covid vaccines, in theory, that should require a lower overall total vaccination rate, given our first vaccine efficacy is in the high eighty percent range. Our second dose vaccination efficacy is over ninety percent for both the Moderna and Pfizer vaccines. That's the majority of the vaccines which have been administered. For us to get, you know, seventy percent vaccination of all the population that's eligible for both would give us rock-solid herd immunity. But we don't need to necessarily wait that long, given the fact that we've got highly effective first dose vaccinations. The one caveat to that would be potentially this, the Delta variant, I've heard questions about that. Recent press release from Moderna, looking at their second dose efficacy against Delta variant, looks like it's about eighty-eight percent efficacious, based on a release from earlier this week. So that's two vaccines, eighty-eight percent efficacious. We're at lower rates for those with only single vaccinations. But traditionally, it's been that seventy percent-ish rate for vaccinations of an effective vaccine in the seventy to eighty percent effective range that would allow us a herd immunity.
Okay, so to add further to that, and thank you for that. If we've got seventy percent received vaccination, this excludes even natural immunity that has happened over time, I would imagine, is that correct?
There should be a significant portion of the population who may have been Covid positive and have not received vaccine that would not be captured by our vaccination numbers. I think in city of Lethbridge, we had somewhere around maybe four... I could look it up, but I think there was around four thousand to five thousand, somewhere in that neighborhood of total cases reported.
Yeah. Anything to add?
Can you hear me on this here, then?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So yeah, the herd immunity, and that all goes to, like, different viruses, it depends on how infectious they are. So if you have, like measles, for instance, that is very infectious, so you need to have ninety-five percent of the population vaccinated to get herd immunity with something like measles. With Covid nineteen, one person generally infects two to three others, is kind of that range. And so a lot of that herd immunity data comes from how many people it takes, you know, to spread it out there. And so that's where this whole sixty to seventy percent comes up, is basically on that.
Thank you. And I do have further questions. I don't know if anybody else is in the queue, but I'll ask one more and then I'll hop out. So speaking with the hospital, how many Covid patients we currently have in the hospital? And do you have an idea of when last one would have been there?
So we've got two in hospital right now that, so both have been, well, one has been there for a long, long time. So this is just chronic care after all of, I mean, this is a horrible disease, right? And so the, those that get so sick with it, sometimes have been on ventilators for weeks or months. And so basically, we've got one that I think has just transferred out to Raymond last week that was in that category. We have one that was, the last admission to our hospital was on the twenty-first of June, that I admitted, actually. And this was an unfortunate gentleman that had severe immunosuppression. And he actually had Covid back in May and has never been able to completely rid himself of the virus. And so that, those are the only two we have. We haven't had any other admissions since then.
And just for comparison's sake, towards some of the peaks that we had earlier in the year, in April, we had in the area of somewhere like six to eight actively ventilated patients in the intensive care unit for much of the time. And we had about fifteen active sick patients on the Covid ward within the hospital.
An ICU, this, we have one in the ICU currently or just in?
I don't believe there are any in the ICU.
Not in ICU.
Not in ICU.
Thank you. I do have further questions, but I'll hop out right now.
Counselor Carlson.
And thank you, Mayor Spearman. I appreciate some leeway here. I didn't realize this was going to be a presentation Q and A, but thank you for that. Just a question. We've had quite a few contacts from other doctors in town who are actually saying, please keep masking. But I'm just wondering, it wasn't sent directly to this meeting, is that why none of those submissions appear on this agenda? Or those were just?
We received a letter from these doctors, and so it was listed as a submission.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Spearman. Just a question if I can, maybe since the doctors are there and answering questions, if you may. Doctors, your position is stop the masking mandate, is that correct?
So our position, basically with the Alberta Health Services, the way things have been done, we've got some very bright people above there. And so they've, there's a lot of data that they're looking at as far as herd immunity and what's safe for the community and what is, when is it okay for us to do these things? And so what our position is, is deferring to those experts that know a lot more than any of us here have come to the conclusion that with all of the data out there, with the first and second doses of the vaccines that have been given out, we've had about eighteen percent of our population that have had Covid as well. And so with all of that, they've determined that this is a safe thing to do. And for me, and as a group of internal, as a group of respiratory and critical care docs, we support them and we would feel that it's best to go forward in a unanimous way with them.
Yeah, to further that, I would describe myself as ardently pro-mask, ardently pro-vaccination. I think these are both public health measures that have been met with excellent success rates and are well thought out. And I think, looking at the guidance which we've received from the beginning from our Alberta Health and Alberta Health Services colleagues in Edmonton that are sitting in committee, that have clinical epidemiologists that look through and comb through the data finely, I think the interventions that they have recommended have been spot-on. It's been our uptake that has been largely the delay. And I think the recommendations, given the fact that we've achieved over seventy percent first dose, close to forty percent provincially of second dose. So even looking at those that are communicating between areas within the province, we're forty percent now second dose vaccinated, or just approaching that shortly. I think that we should be deferring to the provincial experts rather than making pockets of exceptions within the province. Again, if the conditions change, I think we're nimble enough that we can make provisions at that point in time. And generally, Alberta Health Services has been very effective about making planning and making contingency plans for, should there be a surge. You know, there are active plans in place for a fourth surge that can be rolled out literally within a day or two at the hospital here in Lethbridge because of the planning and the preparation that's happened over the past eighteen months here.
I would just add, as a group of respiratory and critical care docs, I think all of us had a different level of what we thought as a community we should be doing. You know, if we were in charge, would you do this, would you do that? And we all, maybe we're a little bit off on what, you know, if we weren't completely unanimous on what we thought was there. But as far as this goes, as a group of respiratory and critical care docs, we're all unanimous on the fact that we should be supporting our provincial mandate here with this.
Okay, thank you for that. I wish I shared your optimism about the nimbleness. We instituted masking here in Lethbridge far quicker, speedier than the province did. Thank you for that. You did talk, and sorry, when I read your letter, I thought you were advocating for the removal of the bylaw, not just supporting the provincial strategy. It talks in your letter about safety opening and protection of vulnerable individuals can be affected through more limited interventions than what is proposed by our city council. Masks are pretty easy intervention. What are the other limited interventions that you think the city should be implementing as opposed to masks? If you could explain those to me, thank you.
Yeah, I think that falls more upon the provincial mandates that are already explained, where congregate settings that might be higher-risk individuals, traveling together, public transportation ride-sharing are the great examples already trotted out by our province. But that makes complete sense that you would say we've got a limited space where we're cramming in lots of individuals and looking to identify those high-risk scenarios where you're sharing air and breathing in a limited space with individuals who may not have a high rate of being vaccinated. That's the situation we should be striving to identify and striving to single out as these are the exceptions where we want to say we keep masking. But I don't think it's necessary for people strolling through a large breezeway with limited risk factors and full vaccination to remain masked to help prevent disease in others when their likelihood of A, being an active carrier is extremely low, and B, being a contagious carrier is also extremely low by virtue of vaccination.
Okay, so thank you. So just basically follow the province.
The data on asymptomatic transmission is one that is very murky, actually. If any of you go and try to research that yourselves, you'll find, like, and, I mean, we all evolved during this. At the beginning, we had numbers as high as eighty percent could be asymptomatic carriers that could be passing that on. When you look through the data, it got down closer to fifteen percent. And then when you take a look at that fifteen percent, how many of them developed symptoms? Within three to five days, most of those that were considered asymptomatic transmitters developed symptoms within three to five days. So I think we're doing a lot of the masking because we think of this asymptomatic transmission that can happen. But I think what was, you know, we echo just what was said in the previous presentation by Dr. Luchek, that the biggest things are if you're sick, stay home. If you're, you know, you don't go out when you're, when you're sick and don't go into those congregate settings, where you're going to pass it on. And most of the, if you look at the data on where people, most people that got Covid, we think where they picked it up at was in their own homes after they'd taken off the vaccines, taken off the masks, and others had come home with it. And so that's where the vast majority of cases were transmitted, was in the homes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Counselor Miyashiro.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming here today. I have a couple of questions. I need, first I need clarity on one point, is that you're here as medical professionals, actually distinguished medical professionals, that are supporting the Alberta Health Services decision regarding masking and restrictions, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, because you're not here as epidemiologists or virologists?
No.
Okay, thank, I just want to make that clear because our colleagues were talking about expert opinion. And I totally respect that you are physicians and your specialty is one that, obviously, you see the outcomes of someone getting the Covid virus. So you do have an opinion on that. But it's really not your mandate and your practice to do population health. You deal on a case-by-case basis versus groups of people that are affected, is that correct?
That is in fact not entirely accurate in that we do preventative medicine and implement population-based interventions within our practices so that the population as a whole can benefit. Smoking cessation is a good example of that. We recommend for smoking cessation for minimization of disease in the individual. In secondhand disease, we minimize exposure to environmental toxins or, you know, asbestos as a, you know, advocating for that, which becomes a population-level intervention, but we practice as individuals. No medical practice is really free of epidemiology involvement because we make a lot of our decisions just based on epidemiologic information which we receive and we frame our clinical decision-making amongst the prevailing winds blowing in epidemiology.
Okay, that was a great answer, thank you. So here's a question, this is just my curiosity more than anything. At one point, when you're advocating for a course of action for a political body like us, is your recommendation at least as much political as it is medical?
Well, personally, I think it's all medical. We are, as physicians, we, you know, like I say, I think, a lot of us think that Alberta Health Services erred so far on the cautious side of it. So everybody could have different opinion as far as what they thought that we should have done. Should we have been a little more aggressive with removing some of these mandates? Should we have been a little more cautious? But as a body, I don't think you can say that... But as a body, I don't think you can say that provincially and through Alberta Health Services, they didn't err on the side of caution. And so, you know, I'm not going to argue against that. They erred on the side of caution and they, these experts at this point have come up with, this is the time when it's safe. And so I would echo that, that this is the time that it's safe to do.
Yeah, I think this is not a political measure. If I'm a politician, then my constituents are my patients. Right? And I'm really, as a politician, you advocate on behalf of your patients and your, sorry, as a politician, you would advocate on behalf of your constituents. Similarly speaking, we're advocating on behalf of our patients who are responsible for overseeing the best practices and risk minimization and looking at the risk benefits. We balance in risks and benefits every day. You know, do I send this patient for a biopsy and risk a lung collapse or do I risk delaying the biopsy and letting a cancer grow? Those are clinical decisions that we have to balance every day of our practice. And this is a similar clinical decision that we have to balance. When is the right time to remove restrictions to allow other things to happen and to trust in vaccinations and to trust in public health measures that are otherwise preventing the disease? And I think that when we look over the data as physicians who have practiced, and just to give context, Dr. Wild, myself and the other two names on the letter, we've all actively practiced in the intensive care unit in Lethbridge Regional Hospital. We were performing rounds on the sickest of the COVID patients on the COVID ward. So we've seen these patients who are the end users and recipients of the patients in hospital and we take care of them. And so I feel very well informed to advocate when I think things can start to loosen up.
Great, thank you. Yeah, no, thank you, appreciate that. And thank you for your work during COVID because I'm sure it wasn't easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So here we are, we're the city of Lethbridge and we're trying to, our challenge with the bylaw, as you mentioned, it's maybe a little easier with the transit buses. The province has said, yeah, transit buses, make sure everybody's wearing masks. We've got the city hall. We're the owners of the Yates Centre next door. Lethbridge Hurricanes yesterday released their schedule for the coming season. So do we let all these people in? Not wearing masks and we're totally, we're totally going to be safe based on the numbers that we've seen and the graphs that we've seen saying, well, the numbers are high in Lethbridge, but not people taking, getting their vaccinations is not as high in the surrounding area. We're not only a city of a hundred thousand people, we're a trading area of two hundred and fifty thousand people. So how do we make the call that next city council meeting, you can come here and you don't have to wear masks. You can all, as many as you want can sit in the audience. You can sit all next to each other. Person next to you might be vaccinated, might not be vaccinated. How do we make those calls? That's what we're talking about today. That's our bylaw.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. And I would, I would say though that where we're at provincially now and locally here, our vaccine uptake here has been better than it has been provincially. Maybe not in the peripheries like you're talking about. But when we're, the Alberta Health Services is tending to err on the side of caution with all of this. Because most would say that herd immunity with this, with the, that ratio of two to, one to two to three that they've passed it on to is going to be closer to that sixty percent. And so, you know, that's where the range of sixty to seventy percent comes in. So then the Alberta Health Services says, okay, we're going to go with that higher number, the seventy percent. And so as we've talked about too here, that seventy percent, you're talking about double vaccinated and stuff is where some of these have been saying, but that first dose is a lot more effective than we thought it was. And plus, when you have that number with the eighteen percent of the general population that has had COVID, that is going to have significant conferred immunity. We don't know how long that conferred immunity will last. But when you combine the vaccination rate and the numbers that have had it, you're erring on the side of caution now letting people go.
Honorable mayor, I think to speak further to your question, you're asking the question that's been asked worldwide right now amongst the highly vaccinated countries. I heard earlier with a question regarding Australia. Australia has an embarrassingly low full vaccination rate of just over four percent. So we can't compare Canada to Australia when our vaccination rates are far higher and Alberta is far higher and, you know, Lethbridge is far higher. So we are, we're struggling with the same question and I don't think we'll have an answer till a year from now. It will be only in hindsight that we'll be able to answer the question of is it correct or is it not? I think the bigger issue is we've got epidemiologists in our provincial medical leadership who believe that we are to a point where we can safely lift the blanket mask mandate and only restrict it to little pockets that are deemed higher risk. And I think that's the overarching message that we want to pass along is this is not Lee Oviet and Eric Wild saying, hey, you know, it's my opinion that I think now is a good time. It's, this is based on the hard scientific vetted data that our epidemiologists at a provincial level have been going over and saying that this is the time where we feel that these levels of restriction can be stripped away, leaving only these smaller levels. And I think adopting a similar stance or standpoint to what the province has mandated offers us both an added measure of freedom, but also the safety to know that we're adhering to our provincial kind of higher up guidelines that are being rendered by epidemiologists and scientists functioning to recommend for the entire province.
Thank you. Yeah, it is a challenge going forward. I think the question is, in our minds, for some of us anyways, should we be emphasizing on encouraging the population to continue to get vaccinated and get the levels up even higher? And continue to say, well, wearing masks is the best practice? As opposed to saying, we're just going to get rid of all the protections and that's our challenge as a governing body. So we're not pretending we're trying to get the best medical advice possible. Is the best medical advice to continue pressing? Advising people, please get vaccinated because full vaccination is far better than single vaccination and should we, should we inside, like if you're outside, here's the rules for masking, probably not needed as long as you socially distance. Inside, if you're going to be with, shoulder to shoulder with people, maybe wearing masks is the best practice.
I think that's a question that's very difficult to answer, but just to tell you in hospital, the degree of protection we wear when caring for a COVID patient would include eye protection that's broad, over the brow, basically contiguous with our mask. We'd be wearing a mask, a similar medical grade mask to what I came in in. We'd also be wearing a contact gown and gloves. So there are degrees of protection that were afforded by doing that that aren't present by just a simple mask. So we're looking at gradients and I think the mask is an important intervention, especially for those that have no capacity to be vaccinated. The actual number of individuals that can't be vaccinated for a medical reason is, in truth, embarrassingly low. It's really polyethylene glycol allergy or allergy to similar or identical vaccine in the past would be really the only true contraindication. We should absolutely be pushing hard for as high a vaccine numbers as we can. That's our best degree of protection. That's our best way forward.
Thank you.
I would encourage everybody just to look at the mortality data and match it up against the contact or the COVID positive data. You'll see spike, the first spike with COVID positive and then the mortality spike looked pretty similar to that first spike. The second spike we had, very similar again, that was around December, January, right? And then the third spike, we had this huge spike that we're just barely getting through here now. And then, but if you look at the mortality data on that one, the spike, it's not a spike anymore. It's just a hump. And that's because our Alberta Health Services has done a great job with risk stratifying those that get the vaccine. So when you get it out to the elderly, this is a different, this is a different beast amongst the elderly. It's a different beast amongst those with other comorbidities. It's a different, you know, like we saw so much in the beginning from First Nations, it was just tragic. And if you take a look south of the border, the Blackfoot tribe down there, they had a great vaccination program and so they've been at zero cases forever. Up here, the vast majority of what we had in the hospital was First Nations. But then once they got that First Nations vaccination program done, we haven't had a case admitted from First Nations since. So I would say, you know, we talk about masks, everything, the masks are doing so much and they have been an important strategy. But what's made the difference is vaccines.
Thank you. Councillor Higgin.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. We've talked a lot about vaccines, the previous presentation and yourselves, the importance of it. I had a graph that came out and I think maybe it spoke a little bit to some of this, the ICU by vaccination status and actually blew up pretty big and I just, I'll put it up for, because I want a little explanation on exactly these curves. And I don't know if you've seen it or not, but let me just.
Okay, yep. Yeah, this is the Alberta Health Services graph that we saw.
Alberta Health Services, what I'd like to know is the explanation, so the red obviously being unvaccinated and we're talking about vaccines. If you look how big I had to blow this up to get this, this very light purple that most people won't be able to see, can you tell me how vaccines in there, how this has come about?
Well, this is all, so the red are those that are unvaccinated. So you can see the tail end of the last spike that we had there and then this then the new big spike that we're just barely going through. So like I was saying, so the light blue and then so the other, the colors on the bottom there represent single dose versus double dose at the very bottom there. I think it's purple on that graph, but you can't really see it, I don't think. But it's, yeah, and so the double vaccinated, we just, so this one young, this not young guy, this guy that I admitted is a double vaccinated that is in hospital right now. So he'd be part of that purple group. But he got double vaccinated, but he's got severe underlying immunodeficiency issues and recently went through chemotherapy for lymphoma. So it's just, he just can't mount an immune response tragically, right? So, I mean, that, I mean, that's pretty, that speaks volumes about how much the vaccine does.
Thank you. No, I, when I saw this graph, I was, I wanted to make sure that anybody out there that was watching opportunity to see this and how important the vaccines are. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, no, and there's, I mean, that's where a lot of, there's so much misinformation out there about, oh, I'm going to die in two years after getting the vaccine, all of these things and I'm going to get a third arm and stuff, but they are very safe and it's been, it's been incredible and it's been a godsend to help us get through this thing.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor Carlson.
Sorry, worship, my hand's been down for some time.
Acting Mayor Carlson?
Just a point of order, real quick, if the city clerk can check and see about our use of props in a procedure bylaw?
The procedure bylaw is silent on the use of props.
Thank you.
Acting Mayor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. This is the longest presentation submission we've had so far. So can we just call the question and move on, please? As a point of order, as an actual point of order?
Served for both.
Hey, I'd like to thank our doctors for their participation and information shared today. Thank you. I have the resolution, the submission resolution has been read already. Deputy Mayor Campbell, be it resolved that city council received the letter as information. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Call question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. May we go to six point three now? Six, six point one, yep. Yep. Okay, I have a resolution jointly moved by councillors Parker and Higgin.
Mayor Spearman, can I just ask for a five-minute bio break? This is probably going to be going long as well. So, and we've got some staff in the room that I may, may need a break as well.
Okay, we'll take, we'll take five-minute break to check social media for accuracy. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna resume the City Council meeting. I have a resolution, uh, proposed from Councillors Parker and Higgin, official business resolution repealing bylaw 6239, temporary mandatory face covering bylaw. Whereas the provincial government has now officially declared July 1, 2021, as the official start of stage three in the lifting of Alberta's COVID-19 health restrictions, and whereas Alberta Health will no longer require the mandatory wearing of masks under most circumstances throughout the province. And whereas the city's, City of Lethbridge's current mask bylaw extends beyond the provincial order in that it officially ends on July 1, 2021. Is that date correct? July, it's December 31st, 2021, isn't it? No, I'm reading the next line, the City of Lethbridge's current bylaw.
Extends, if you look at the word extends, beyond.
Okay. Extends, okay, okay. Whereas the, Alberta Health has the expertise and knowledge in advising on issues of community health, as well as the ability to mandate and enforce health orders, and whereas the citizens of Lethbridge have done their role in helping bring down COVID-19 numbers drastically, and whereas City Council has the ability to bring back a mandatory mask bylaw if COVID numbers surpass a level of concern as advised by local health authorities. And whereas maintaining the current mask bylaw just, beyond just July 1st, 2021, will cause confusion and mixed messaging and create greater division in the community. Therefore, be it resolved that City Council give all three readings on June 29th, 2021 to a bylaw to repeal bylaw 6239, temporary mandatory face coverings bylaw. Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, first of all, before I get into debate, I'll just entertain any questions from my colleagues in regards to the OBR that myself and Counselor Higgin have brought forward today.
Hey, are there any questions? Counselor Kaufman?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman. To the city manager designate, um, if this, uh, motion passes and we repeal the bylaw, what's the strategy for City of Lethbridge facilities or, or, um, City of Lethbridge-owned facilities?
Thanks, Counselor Kaufman. The intent would be to follow the, the direction the council provides. Uh, there are two pieces to this internally. One is, um, you know, appropriate protocols in providing a safe space and access for citizens. And again, that would be directed by whatever it is council decides or not. In terms of the internal to the workplace, um, safety protocol and PPE that have been put in place over time and responding to, to the pandemic, those would, uh, um, have to be dealt with very deliberately. And I can't tell you what that looks like right now. We're working through that, as is just about every organization, um, that is confronting, um, uh, what I would call a return to the physical workspace. And so, um, those are, those are the comments that I share at this point in time, but, but our intent would be to follow the, uh, the decision that council makes with respect to mask use in the city, mirror that in the corporation, but, but also look at, at if that is the case, if, if, if council chooses to go in another direction, it's quite easy, we simply comply. But if there is a, a decision to, um, to rescind the max, uh, the mask bylaw, we'd have, we, we have a lot of work to do internally to look at what protocol we put in place to ensure the varying positions of, of staff with respect to their own safety and security in the workplace.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spearman.
Counselor Miasiro?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spearman. Uh, thank you to the movers for bringing this forward. So I have a question to the city clerk, uh, or the city solicitor. They're procedural questions. If we pass this resolution that says we have three readings in one sitting, does that go against the, uh, MGA? Do we not have to vote unanimously to have three sittings, um, three readings in one sitting?
You do have to pass a motion after second reading that allows authorization to proceed with third reading at the same meeting, and that has to be unanimous.
Right, so should this, so should this resolution be amended to reflect that? Because really, we can't say we're gonna have three readings in this resolution if, if, if we have to make that, um, uh, we have to make that vote after the second reading anyway. Is that correct?
I, I'll, I'll let the mover speak to that, but, um, I think the intent of the motion from the mover was to have three readings today if possible.
I can speak to that.
I, I understand, but procedurally, you just said you can't actually do that right now. You can only do it after second reading.
Counselor Parker would like to speak.
Yeah, and I thank you for the question, because I knew that question was gonna be coming. So, the resolution states that we, if this passes, and then all this would need is a simple majority to pass this OBR. If this OBR passes with a simple majority, then we can, then we can proceed to all three readings, and when all three readings occur, you would have to have unanimous consent. So, for example, if this was to pass with a simple majority, and we didn't get unanimous support on all three readings following this, then it would go to the July 13th meeting where you would need a simple majority. Am I correct, Madam City Clerk?
That's correct. It would go to the next scheduled meeting to deal with third reading.
Yeah, okay, so, so really, uh, Counselor Parker, then, then what was the purpose of putting in that we're gonna do three readings in one sitting, if you knew that we had to vote on the third, third reading anyway?
Because if, if, if we don't get a resolution to proceed, a directional resolution to move with the three readings, that's why you need to have this resolution passed first to authorize the city clerk to bring forward a bylaw, repeal bylaw, which would allow us to vote on it today. So it's kind of, we gotta do this first, and if this doesn't pass, we don't go with the second part.
So, okay, so you couldn't have a repeal bylaw, just introduce a repeal bylaw and do two readings, and then do a vote for a third? I'm just, I'm just not understanding the procedure.
This is the procedure that I went with after talking to both the city clerk, the city manager, and through, through her office, as well as Mr. Sarsfield. This is the procedure that I came to, and then I, I did ask these questions as well last week to go through all these situational, and they said this is fine going this way. I appreciate that question, it is a good question.
Okay, thanks. Still doesn't make sense, but thank you.
Acting Mayor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I think my question is a lot like Counselor Miasiro's, so it could be to the city clerk or to the city solicitor. If we vote this down, we can still do three readings if we want, right? This is a moot resolution, because we can just by, bring a motion to the floor after second reading, if we like the amendments that have been made, if we like which of the bylaws we choose, we can simply do it as a verbal motion at that time. Am I correct?
Bylaw is on your agenda today, so you could, uh, I guess, vote this down and proceed to the bylaw. I'll let, uh, Solicitor Lowen weigh in.
I do see them as, as, uh, you know, subject to any ruling from the chair, a, as separate motions, and, and, and council could in the same meeting reach different conclusions on them, one being a motion for first reading, another motion for second reading, a motion for unanimity, and then a motion for third reading. That, that's different than the motion that's before you.
Right, because that would then happen after we see amendments, so we'd know what we'd wanna do. So thank you.
Hey, any further questions from council? Counselor Morrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll address it to the city manager, and Mr. City Manager, you'll probably forward this to the, uh, solicitor. So, I'm just thinking back, um, we put this, uh, bylaw in place some time ago, and then we voted on it, uh, if, to the best of my knowledge, three times to extend the date of the bylaw. Were we able to do that without actually going to three readings of the bylaw as we're doing today?
I would ask the, the city solicitor to please respond.
Counselor, that, that's an excellent question, but I, uh, just ask you to repeat it to ensure that I, I understand.
We have an existing bylaw. I'm going back to when we created the bylaw.
Yes.
And we created that bylaw by going through three readings.
Yes.
And it's a bylaw that we did not need any public hearing.
There's no mandatory public hearing required for that bylaw. Correct.
Okay, right. So then, we have changed and extended the date to this bylaw on three occasions, to the best of my recollection. Is that correct?
I only remember two, but, uh, you, you might remember better than I do.
Well, even if it's one, we made those changes by a resolution, correct?
Yes.
Were we allowed to do that? Should of those changes to the bylaw not have gone through three readings?
That would have been a, a better practice. The bylaw contemplated extension by resolution and was allowed.
Sorry, Mr. City Manager, right now I don't need better or worse. I need direct answers to the question. When we made the changes and extended the dates to this bylaw by a resolution, was that the proper way to deal with this bylaw?
Well, your, your question presupposes that there's only one proper way to do it, and, and I, I can't accept that premise. The bylaw included and contemplated council's will for, for extending the provision of the bylaw in a particular way, in a way that's not prohibited by the MGA. The reason I responded by saying that, uh, amending it by bylaw would be preferred, because that's the well-understood and usually-used process. If you did a survey of these types of bylaws across municipalities in Alberta, you would find a number of innovative, is how I would choo, the adjective I would choose to use, approaches that different lawyers use to try to, to try to address some of the unique needs of this bylaw or this type of bylaw coming into force and going out of force because of the pandemic. So I hope that's direct enough, sir.
Okay, and my question for this round, my last one for this round is, when council voted to extend the date of the bylaw, by going and doing it via resolution, in my mind, and I believe under the Municipal Government Act, we have basically made our existing bylaw null and void, because we technically changed that bylaw by a resolution, and we needed to do it by going through a different and another bylaw of three readings. Is that correct?
Ultimately, that determination would only be made by a judge.
So you can't give us any of legal advice on whether our existing bylaw, as of today, is valid or not?
It's my opinion that it's valid. I recognize that there are other legal opinions, and ultimately, we would only know which one becomes law when ruled upon by a judge in a court of competent jurisdiction.
Thank you for that.
Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman, um, and my apologies. My computer froze and I had to go to a different device, so if I, if this question was asked and I missed it, I apologize. Um, the, the actionable clause in, in this is that council give all three readings on a bylaw to appeal. Um, so is, is, will that trump, does that have to be unanimous in order to proceed to all three readings, or if we just move on to the bylaw, we do that anyways? Like, I'm not, I'm not sure the process here. Like, this just says, council give three readings. Well, in order to give three readings, you have to have unanimity, I believe. Um, and so, does this resolution need unanimity? To have any effect?
Counselor Carlson?
I'm, I'm just.
This OBR, this resolution to adopt, only requires majority, but when you get to the bylaw, first and second reading do require majority, um, you need unanimous consent to proceed, it's a separate motion, to third reading on the same meeting. So that'll be when you get to the bylaw.
So, why do we need this resolution at all?
I can't answer that question.
Okay. Thanks.
Any councillor can bring forward a bylaw, uh, or an OBR, and that, two councillors have jointly done that, so here we are. Any further questions? I see none. We'll move on to debate.
Mayor, uh, sorry, Mayor Spearman, a, a point of clarification for question, um, asked by Counselor Morrow. Um, if you read our current mask bylaw, Counselor Morrow, you'll see that there's a provision in there that, um, uh, was added that the bylaw can be extended by resolution of council. So it's actually in the bylaw stating that the bylaw date can be extended, uh, by resolution of council. So that's the process that, uh, that we've engaged in, in order to, um, uh, move the dates. Uh, hopefully that clarifies your question.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Counselor Carlson. I was hoping the city solicitor would tell us that, not because I don't trust you, but I do appreciate that, and I thank you.
Just to clarify, if I could, that was the response provided?
Yes, the solicitor did say that. Yeah.
That's the response we provided.
I'm, I'm sorry if I missed that. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Solicitor.
Okay, we'll move on to debate. Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first and foremost, I want to thank my colleagues for allowing me to speak to this OBR today. I don't want to use this opportunity to debate to talk about where we've been. I don't want to use this opportunity to say that he or she was right in the past. I want to use this opportunity to decide what was most appropriate, the thing that we should do as a community moving forward. And that's very important here. Our current bylaw states that we will be going until December 31st, 2021, no matter what the province does. And I believe that that creates a huge amount of confusion, a great amount of angst, a great amount of conflict in the community. And I believe that we have a very difficult time by itself in just enforcing a bylaw such as this. When the province had their order in place, they had the resources in place to enforce it through Alberta Health. They had the opportunity to actually use local law enforcement, if need be, in combination with working with our city. I do not know what's going to happen on July 1st if we don't take action. I think this community will be confused. I think people will not know what to do. But I believe the right thing to do is to follow the direction of Alberta Health. My colleagues made a very valid point on the other side of the spectrum in saying, "Well, we don't know what the province is going to do, so we need to do something, so we need to put something in place." And we don't know when the province is going to bring in their deadline, so we should have something in place. And we did do that, and there was a majority that spoke, and the majority voted in favor of that. Now the province has put a deadline and put an end date of July 1st of this year. So that answers the concerns of my colleagues in regards to now they have certainty of what the province is going to do, and now we can follow suit with the experts. This OBR doesn't talk about people, this isn't, I don't like the word the premier uses as, "July 1st is Freedom Day," because it isn't a day of freedom. It's just another day moving forward in battling COVID-19 in our community and throughout the world. I don't expect people to throw away these masks. Actually, I'd encourage people to put these masks away and be prepared for the next time something does occur, because we should learn from the past. We've been reassured by the province that if things do go sideways, touch wood that it doesn't, that they are prepared, they have the infrastructure in place to address it, and they can turn on a dime. And I have to trust that the knowledge and expertise in past history that they've learnt, that we can feel reassured. We talk about people that are at risk, and we're concerned about them if we don't have a mask mandate or a mask bylaw in place. People have all the right to wear a mask. They have all the right to wear four masks if they want, for their safety. But they also have a responsibility to take advantage of vaccines when provided, and that's my personal take. Some people may think, "Well, I'm not a vaccinated," but there is the ability to be vaccinated, so you can drastically bring down the risk of you getting COVID-19. Where is the end? I don't know what the end is. Some will argue, "Well, we have to wait till the end, this pandemic is over." Well, if you look at what the pandemic means, this pandemic means that there's no more spread in every country throughout the world. Well, I don't think we're going to get there yet. But I think we owe a huge great, a huge gratitude to modern science in that we have vaccines, and that we have choices in our vaccines, something unheard of. Some say, and I don't want to cherry pick, but some say it took almost 10 to 15 years in the past to find vaccines, and now due to advancements in medical technology, they banged it off in a year. And I think that's the greatest accomplishment ever, and probably in my time, probably in a lot of people's time, to see that happen. So people, you can wear the mask. I encourage you to wear the mask. I've been reassured by our city manager through a meeting last week that when people come into our facilities, that there will be masks, disposable masks provided to them if they need it, if they feel they need it. Dr. Henshaw in Alberta Health has said that they are recommending that uncertain situations, masks should be worn, examples being ride-sharing, transit whatsoever. I also believe that within the medical field, such as senior care, extended care, hospitals, that they will be following certain orders of masking in place. So I think we are doing our due diligence as a society, but I also believe that it's important that we follow suit with what the province is doing here. I have a clause in my resolution that city council can bring back, if need be, a mass bylaw or a mass mandate of some sort, when the local health authority feels it is appropriate. And I think that's why I built this through with Counselor Higgins of a compromise. No one's, there's no right or wrong to this, but I just want to be consistent, and I don't want to create confusion and despair in my community. And that is my opening comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yep. Any further debate? I see none.
I will allow Counselor Higgins to close.
Counselor Higgins to close?
Sorry, Mayor.
Counselor Kaufman is in there. Sorry, we see him in there, yeah. Sorry, no, just a link to my button.
No problem.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, thank you. This, this has been a fascinating study in public policy, you know, all dealing with this simple little thing. We can go back a couple of decades to debates in the, I guess, the 70s and 80s about seatbelts, especially here in Alberta, and on the prairies, and sort of attitudes towards them. And they mimic what people have been expressing about the masks, which I find quite, quite fascinating. We've been dealing with this for so long, and so many motions have come in front of council, it's hard to sort of figure out where to start. But let me start in one response we, you know, to what we've been receiving in emails, a lot of people have been challenging the jurisdiction. And I absolutely agree, because I read my constitution, that healthcare is the jurisdiction, not the sole jurisdiction, but the primary jurisdiction of the provincial government. The feds have, have responsibility in there as well. But the moment that the premier, about a year ago, made the statement that municipalities can establish their own municipal mask bylaws, the moment the premier made that statement, it meant that municipalities actually could take jurisdiction if they wish. And our municipality did. And city council, and I'm not going to say the majority of city council, because a decision of council is a decision of council. Council made the decision to impose a mass bylaw in the city of Lethbridge. And it's why, you know, when you look at it jurisdictionally, we've got 10 different approaches to the pandemic, because you've got 10 different medical officers of health running 10 different provinces, who are all advising politicians on actions they should or should not take, because our chief medical officer of health in each of the province, each province is also listening to experts, and they tend to be listening to exactly the same expert. But the policies get rolled out differently because politicians are involved inevitably. So we do have the jurisdiction because the premier gave it to us, and it would have been quite simple, would have been incredibly helpful, I think, for all of us who were in municipal government, at least in Alberta. If a couple of weeks ago, the premier had said, "Not only are we revoking the provincial order on masks, municipal orders will no longer be in effect either," because, to paraphrase, as the good premier giveth, the good premier can take us the way as well. And that's his jurisdiction, that's his domain. So that would have been helpful. But here we are. So, how do we move forward? We've received an awful lot of emails. To those people who send emails in a very thoughtful and a very respectful manner, thank you, appreciate that, appreciate the insights, appreciate the perspectives. There was a ton of stuff to consider. And again, this has been a long journey, so new information is always popping up, and you go, "Okay, hadn't considered that," and I appreciate that. For people who were curt, disrespectful, rude, I just ask that you remember that, first of all, nobody here, none of the nine of us wakes up in the morning and says, "Gee, how can I screw over the people of Lethbridge today?" Pretty sure none of us do. I'm going to go out and I'll live in there, but I'm pretty sure none of us do. And we're just trying to do what's best. We're trying to do what's best for the community. We're just following my little Bible here, called the Municipal Government Act, Section 3C, to develop and maintain safe and viable communities. That's our purpose, to develop and maintain safe and viable communities. And safety, in this particular situation, came through this little device. So we acted in a responsible manner. And now we're at a point where the question being put in front of us is, do we want to get rid of it? We received an email that actually motivated, I want to say pushed, but motivated, because this individual ended their email with the phrase, "Listen to the angry people." Spent a lot of time actually reflecting on that. "Listen to the angry people" is what the statement was. And that made me realize a couple of things. First of all, there's an incredible amounts of, amount of anger in this community, over a number of things, not just masks, but, you know, you could kind of chalk it all up to COVID. We're all struggling. We're not in this together. I have access to a beautiful yard in the garden, I can do pathways and get in the coolies and whatnot. There are people living in apartments, there are people in wheelchairs, there are people who are confined to their homes or institutions for, for health conditions. We're not all in this together, and we all express it differently. But "listen to the angry people." Never once in my life have I made a good decision based on anger. My decision-making process, as an elected representative, as somebody sitting at the table to govern an organization called the city of Lethbridge, has to be based on what is going to be best for the community, in whole or in part. But "listen to the angry people" resonated with me, and it continues to resonate with me. And I know this individual, and I know that they're a good person, but it expresses a statement of concern as much as it does a statement of anger, I guess. The problem that I see is on Thursday, July 1st, you're going to see angry people. And I'm going to call them the happy angries, just so we understand who they are. And they're going to be happy because they no longer have the restriction, and that's fine. But I have a feeling that this small percentage of the population, the happy angries, are actually going to be out in full force, celebrating their freedom, freedom from the mask. And I get that. The majority of our citizenry, by the way, I don't believe are angry. I think they're as confused and as terrified and as anxious and as hopeful as, as everybody else. But the angry people are a force with which to be reckoned. And on July 1st, and the 2nd, and 3rd, and 4th, the angry people are going to go forth, and they are going to return to some semblance of normalcy. Hopefully, they've had two vaccines, but I don't know that. My concern is that the angry people are going to spread that anger through their interactions with others. But it's going to be confusing. I don't, I don't think the community is so stupid that, you know, nobody's going to know what to do. I think people will know what to do. Those who are responsible with their personal healthcare, and we heard, we heard Dr. Blue Chatch make the, make the statement about personal choice, personal responsibility. That's what this is basically turning into. Come July 1st, if we repeal the mask bylaw, it becomes personal responsibility. If people want to go out without a mask, that's fine. You know what? That's, that's the new normal. The province is waiving their restrictions. We are a subordinate level of government to the provincial government. Our bylaw will be in contravention, won't be in contravention, because we still have the jurisdiction, but will create that level of angst. What I ask, if I were to support this bylaw, or to support the repeal, and it carries, what I ask, and I'm no longer speaking to my colleagues, I'm speaking to the community now, is that you take the time to care for each other. Because this, this anger is, is driving us in different directions. If you don't like the mask, that's fine. Go forth, celebrate. But if you see somebody with a mask, be respectful. In fact, probably just open a door for them. Don't say anything at all. Smile, because we can see your smile. Be polite. Just acknowledge that, that as much as you have the freedom to not wear a mask, somebody who chooses to wear a mask, or who has to wear a mask because they're immunocompromised, they have comorbidities, they're going through chemo treatment, just acknowledge that they have that choice as well. And if you choose to wear a mask, at the same time, don't ridicule or belittle people who choose not to. Because, you know, this whole mantra of experts listening to experts, that's problematic too, because we're all getting information from 95 different sources. And I'll tell you, these things don't help. I don't know if I froze or not, I'm holding up my cellphone. Social media, social media is not helping. So, at this place and time, at this juncture, given that the provincial government is removing its order, and what I see is going to be a movement in our community of people who are pushing and forcing their way, expressing themselves in a way that concerns me. I will support repeal of the bylaw at this time, but I really, really just want everybody out there to understand what it means, where we still are, what we're still all experiencing, and treat each other with compassion, treat each other with care and consideration. We aren't all in this together in the same way. And I think that's going to help bring us all back together, if we can just treat each other with gentle, simple care and compassion and kindness.
Thank you. Anybody else? Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. I just want to say that what Counselor Kaufman just said is pretty much amazing. And I really appreciate the emotion and the, and sort of a lot of the things that I've been going through too, so I appreciate you putting it into words, what I definitely couldn't put in words. And I, I was, you know, the thing that I got from everyone that we talked to today, from our Alberta Health experts and our physicians, our doctors, let's, let's, let's all get vaccinated. I think that's, that's the most important thing that we can do, the easiest thing we can do, it's available. We, we got vaccinations from, you know, back in Dr. Salk, Polio, all, all of the things that we, we are, we don't have anymore. It's because of vaccination. So please, you know, trying to have the appeal that Mr. Kaufman said, you know, just be kind, do, do the right thing, get vaccinated, open doors for people, and smile, all that stuff. And my, my intention is to, to approve the repealing of the bylaw. Thank you.
Counselor Mia Shiro?
Um, thank you, Mayor Spurman. I think just for clarity that I do appreciate what Counselor Kaufman said as well, and I, I do think though that this whole process of the resolution was a complete waste of time if we were going to debate the bylaw anyway. And I, and I think it just gave more, more airtime to the people that want to talk about how hard they had it during, during our COVID restrictions. I agree with Counselor Kaufman when he said we need to be wary of our behavior towards each other. We need to look out, I work with vulnerable population, some of the population work with this, some are not. However, that, that's something to consider, that, that there are going to be places that are going to require facial coverings, for at least some, for at least the time being. And people need to recognize that individual businesses and individual organizations and offices might still require, and, and that's completely within their right to do so. I will support this so that we can move on, and hopefully, things will work out in a positive way. This resolution itself has no bearing on the bylaw, from what I understand. So it doesn't matter if this resolution passes, we're still dealing with the bylaw, that from what I understand is correct. But I will support this. But I do have to say something not so conciliatory. You've heard that saying that a broken clock is still correct at least twice a day? Well, I think you can make the corollary with the people that have wanted this mask or facial covering bylaw to go away from the beginning, are now because we're near the, we're at the time where people are getting vaccinated, and the province is removing some of their restrictions. So now the people that didn't want masks, and I hesitate to call them anti-maskers, even though if you voted against something five times, it's hard to say you're not. if you voted against something five times, it's hard to say you're not. However, I will move ahead with this and hope for the best. And I hope that people behave in the way that Counselor Kaufman described. I hope that we don't spread variants to each other. I hope that the, the more virulent, um, forms of, of this virus don't come to this community. And I hope that the people in our surrounding area that come here to do business, um, are considerate of the people of Lethbridge. And maybe that they will, at some point, feel like they need to get vaccinated and keep everybody in our whole region safe. So I will support this, um, and I'm hoping for the best.
Counselor Carlson?
Sorry, Your Worship, I took my hand down. Counselor Kaufman stated it eloquently, and Counselor Miyashiro put the fine points on it. I do know several, uh, businesses, commercial ventures in town that are already saying they are going to continue, um, requiring masks in their venues. And so I just wanna highlight that, uh, if the province lifts their restrictions and Lethbridge follows suit, please be kind. Um, and if you show up to a business and they ask you to put a mask on, that's, that's their business and they have the right to do so. And so I guess the theme of kindness, compassion, and respect, uh, needs to be really underlined. So thank you.
Thank you. It was, uh, thank you each for your debates to date. Uh, we'll be allowing the closers, or the movers to close shortly. It, it is an interesting discussion. And, uh, when you get conflicting information from the federal health people and the provincial health people, the so-called experts, it's challenging. So, I know that Dr. Tam today said it's too early to remove masks. But our province is moving ahead two months after having the worst rates of infection in North America. And it has been challenging, uh, as we've gone through the first wave, the second wave, uh, and the third wave, to say, yep, the province is doing a great job when it seemed like we were only acting at the very last instance. I hope that doesn't happen if there's a fourth wave, that we're proactive and we do the best we can to protect people. I wasn't sure how to go about this, uh, looking at it, uh, which is an odd thing for me to say, there's a bylaw that requires unanimous resolution. So I thought maybe I'd vote against the OBR and then support the bylaw, rather than stand in the way. But, uh, I do think we've done the best we can as a municipality to try and protect citizens by putting the bylaw in place in the first place. I think we've tried to show leadership by saying, by supporting all the provincial recommendations from the medical officer of health. I still encourage people, please get vaccinated. I've been doubly vaccinated. I'm looking forward to resuming my normal activities. I want my family to be doubly vaccinated. I wanna make sure I'm not putting the people I love at risk. I wanna make sure I'm not putting the citizens I represent at risk. So I hope that we will move forward and continue to be a citizen, uh, a community that is leading in vaccinations. We still have a ways to go in my mind. And the closer we can get to that eighty percent, uh, the better in terms of, uh, the, uh, protecting each other and doing what we can. So if everyone can do their part, we will be a better community. I hope that the communities around us will also respect that we want to be a safe community. And we'll, we'll do their part if they come to Lethbridge to make sure that they're not putting our citizens at risk. So with that, I will support the resolution after all. I have my druthers. Uh, because I'm not gonna stand in the way and vote one way on the resolution and vote the other way on the bylaw to make sure that I'm not the one stopping it from going forward today. But thank you to the movers for bringing this forward. Uh, hopefully it does create unity in the community. And I hope that everybody continues to follow best practices. And like me, wear a mask when you think that it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much to my colleagues. I, I don't wanna add a lot to this, and I, and I appreciate the comments. And they, they do mean a lot. And I'll, I'll, I'll tell you why. We, we brought this in, this bylaw in for, for education purposes. And we did it. The community listened. And, and look where we're at today. There's been times I've hopped on a Zoom meeting at home, and before I log in, I'll put on my mask and by myself, I'm, I'm just, it's in my mind to do this. And, you know, we, we sit around this horseshoe as, as leaders, leaders in our community, leaders of this organization. And I think we really do need to show leadership. We need to listen to the community, but not only that, we need to listen to the experts. And I really liked what I heard earlier. We need to be kind. We need to be kind, we need to be respectful. And we need to do the right thing. And I would ask for council support as we repeal this bylaw.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I just wanna thank, thank you to all my colleagues. Um, it's been a tough, as Counselor Kaufman said, it's been a, it's been a year of COVID, and it's been a lot of stress on a lot of us. Uh, a lot of neighborhoods, a lot of businesses. I respect and appreciate anyone who still wears the mask. And I think it's important that we never, ever shame anyone in regards to what they're doing moving forward. The way this community wins as we get through this pandemic, and, uh, each day, hopefully, we're getting closer.
All in favor? Are any opposed?
I'm opposed, cause this means nothing. Thank you.
Okay. You wanna do a roll call?
Counselor Morrow?
Favor?
Counselor Miyashiro?
Sorry, I lost my, I lost my pointer. Um, in favor?
Counselor Parker?
In favor?
Acting Mayor Croson?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Favor?
Mayor Spearman?
In favor?
Counselor Carlson?
Favor?
Counselor Kaufman?
Favor?
Counselor Higgin?
Favor, cause it does mean a lot.
One? That's carried.
Eight. All right, we're twenty-two minutes past the public hearing time. Do we go to the public hearing and deal with the bylaws after the public hearing? Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we're going to take a break while we switch the technology to the public hearing. Yeah, an issue with security?
I'm hearing from people that they've lost the Shaw feed, but I think that's just because we're switching, right?
Yes.
On what?
On Shaw.
Oh, we should be, right?
We should be still on Shaw. Check in for us.
Okay.
We'll check in right now.
Yeah. I was talking to Mayor Nancy the other day. He said they only have three more. Okay. Okay. Okay, we're gonna start the public hearings. Should we do a roll call? Just make sure everybody's online?
Sure. Counselor Miyashiro?
Doing a roll call. Counselor Miyashiro?
Counselor Parker?
Here.
Acting Mayor Croson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Spearman?
Present.
Counselor Carlson?
Present.
Counselor Kaufman?
Present.
Counselor Higgin?
Present.
Counselor Morrow?
Yep.
And Counselor Miyashiro?
Yeah, here.
Okay, good. All present. Thank you.
Eight. Bylaw 6289. I call to order the public hearing for bylaw 6289, the Land Use Amendment re 2604 and 2702, Thirty-Fourth Street North, Sharing Business and Industrial Park. The procedure for this hearing will be, we will begin calling upon Tyson Boylan, Senior Community Planner, to provide the background to the case. Those else who wish to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We will then ask three times if there was anybody else who wishes to make a presentation. City Council will then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading will be made by City Council immediately following the public hearing. I now call upon Tyson Boylan to provide the background to the case. Mr. Boylan?
Thank you, Your Worship and members of council. This is bylaw 6289. It's a proposed land use bylaw amendment to two parcels in the Sharing Business and Industrial Park. Next slide, please. So my presentation today will cover the relevant, relevant information regarding the land use bylaw amendment, including a look at previous planning documents, the existing zoning, and the proposed rezoning. It will give an evaluation of the proposed amendment, and will conclude with our department's recommendation to City Council. Next slide, please. So the applicant today is Auxilio Vet Shield Limited. They're here today and will, and will be making a presentation after I am done. Um, in addition to the uses that are allowed under, um, under the current Ivy Land Use District on the property, they also wish to have the use of animal care major. Next slide, please. So the amendment area is in approximately the northeast of the city, as shown as the red star above here. Next slide. And the proposed amendment is outlined here, the green hatch as shown above. The amendment area is located in the southwestern part of the Sharing Business and Industrial Park. Just to the south is Twenty-Sixth Avenue South and the Churchill Industrial Park. To the west of Sharing are the residential neighborhoods of Block Wolf Uplands and Park Meadows. Next slide, please. So here's a more detailed look at the amendment area, um, outlined in green here once again. This air photo is from 2019, and since this time, much has changed in the area. Thirty-Fourth Street has been extended northwards, and the pathway along Twenty-Sixth Avenue North has been extended in front of the site as well. On the opposite side of Twenty-Sixth Avenue to the south is the Pepsi Cohost's Frito-Lay Plant, and to the west is the Northside Walmart site. The area to the e, to the east is currently undeveloped at this time. Next slide, please. So, uh, here's a photo on the ground, looking northwest, standing at the intersection of Twenty-Sixth Avenue North and Thirty-Fourth Street North, um, looking at the amendment area. The amendment area is shown here next to the road with the Northside Walmart site seen in the far background. The newly constructed Twenty-Sixth Avenue pathway can be seen here as well on the left-hand side of this image. Next slide, please. So here are the relevant planning documents to this proposed rezoning, and this demonstrates not only the planning work that has been done to date, but shows how the neighborhood plans need to comply. So the amendment area is in approximately the northeast of the city, as shown as the red star above here. Next slide. And the proposed amendment is outlined here, the green hatched, as shown above. The amendment area is located in the southwestern part of the sharing business and industrial park. Just to the south is 26th Avenue South and the Churchill Industrial Park. To the west of sharing are the residential neighborhoods of Block Wolf Uplands and Park Meadows. Next slide, please. So here's a more detailed look at the amendment area, outlined in green here once again. This air photo is from 2019, and since this time, much has changed in the area. 34th Street has been extended northwards, and the pathway along 26th Avenue North has been extended in front of the site as well. On the opposite side of 26th Avenue to the south is the Pepsi Co Hostess Frito-Lay Plant, and to the west is the Northside Walmart site. The area to the east is currently undeveloped at this time. Next slide, please. So here's a photo on the ground, looking northwest, standing at the intersection of 26th Avenue North and 34th Street North, looking at the amendment area. The amendment area is shown here, next to the road, with the Northside Walmart site seen in the far background. The newly constructed 26th Avenue pathway can be seen here as well, on the left-hand side of this image. Next slide, please. So here are the relevant planning documents to this proposed rezoning, and this demonstrates not only the planning work that has been done to date, but shows how the neighborhood plans need to comply with the cities and provinces over our general documents. Next slide, please. So here is the ESP concept map from the latest 2019 amendment, which displays a general layout of land uses. The red arrow points to the parcels, which were intended for business industrial uses in this plan. Next slide, please. And this is the concept map from the outline plan, which is more detailed than the ESP is. The red arrow points to the parcels, which were intended for business industrial uses in this outline plan as well. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the existing IB district on the left and the proposed DC district on the right, just to compare them side by side. The amendment is proposed as animal care minor, is a permitted use under the existing IB district, but does not allow for overnight accommodations of animals or for animal care facilities to occur outside of the building. The applicant wishes to construct an animal care facility that allows for overnight stays and an outdoor component, which is allowed under the use of animal care major, so a rezoning is required to allow for this use. The applicant still desires to retain the other land uses and regulations under the existing IB district, so a rezoning to a DC district is proposed here. This DC district simply includes the same allowable uses as under the current IB district, with the additional use of animal care major. The DC district also contains regulations to ensure screening for the nearby commercial site and for 26th Avenue North, and contains regulations to ensure connectivity to the pathways and sidewalks along 26th Avenue and 34th Street. Next slide. So this application was evaluated in terms of different planning documents, including the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan and the 2010 MDP, and it fulfills these. Next slide, please. In terms of the governing ESP and outline plan, the proposed amendment is in compliance with the land uses that are described and shown in these plans. The proposed DC bylaw is based on the rules of the conventional IB district, so it's still generally consistent as stated in the ESP. And no tactical issues were identified by City Stop as well. Excuse me. Next slide, please. So for notification, mailouts were sent out to the three owners of the parcel shown in the green hatched areas shown above here. Ads appeared in the left collateral, and this was also advertised on the city's website as well. And I received no calls or emails from the public about this amendment. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, bylaw 6289 is compliant with all existing statutory and approved plans for the area. Next slide. And it is our recommendation that City Council approve bylaw 6289. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boylan. I now call upon the applicant to make a presentation. We can't hear you. Are you on mute, or are we controlling the sound?
I think you're in control. Can you hear me now?
Yep. Good. Thank you.
All right.
Please introduce yourself and begin.
My name is Jacob Atzebel. I'm honored to meet with you. And yeah, we would basically like to get a rezoning so we can build a pet hospital for regular pet care and emergency services. We have been looking for many years to find a place where we can justify making the investment. It'll cost millions to build this facility, and we cannot justify doing that in a leased location. And so this is why we're happy to have found this, but unfortunately, we'll need a rezoning, and we are hoping that you will grant that. And thank you very much for entertaining our application. And if you have any questions, please feel free. Ian Marksen is our architect on this project, and if there is no questions, I'll hand it over to him.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Have you seen the slideshow? Is that presented to anybody?
We've seen the slideshow from the City Planner's Department.
Okay, there's a presentation from the applicant. There we are. Thank you.
We'll be on slide five now, I believe.
Thank you. So the owners are very conscious that they want to produce a quality building that is almost providing almost a gateway into the city from the east and from the west. It appears to complete the commercial development that is surrounding the Walmart site there. So the applicant is proposing to go for an NDG-efficient building, a LEED building, as well as wealth certification, which puts the emphasis on providing a building that enhances the quality of the environment for the occupants as well. So we're seeing this building as a gateway and a buffer. One gateway into the city, and one is a buffer separate from the large warehousing distribution sites that are to the east of the property. We don't see that the development will increase heavy traffic, and we don't see that there'll be an increased noise generation from the development based on the building design.
Next slide, please.
And the between plus the exterior pet exterior for the pets. Thank you. Space of exterior landscaping and a minute space around the building, which you wouldn't necessarily get with an IB district, or maybe it might be reduced. And so we're very conscious that this building needs to stand out and be a quality building as people enter and leave this building. Location's access as well with the large roads, the good road network, and provides easy access to the surrounding areas in Lethbridge. Thank you very much.
Rob, do you have anything that we forgot to mention?
I don't believe so at this time. I think it's just important to highlight the note of allowing us to rezone this lot that we own in order that we can really confidently make the investment for a long-term eco-friendly building that will be attractive for residents and people driving through the city, and also help us attract top veterinary talent to the city. So it's an ultimate improvement or help for the city and the community in general in North Lethbridge.
Okay, does that conclude the presentation by the applicant?
I think it does. Thank you very much for hearing us out, and if anyone have any questions, we'd be happy to try and answer.
Okay, there may be questions in a few minutes. The next stage of the public hearing is: Are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? For a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? Is there anyone online that wants to make a presentation? Nope? Okay, for the third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing no other presenters, it is now time for Council to ask questions of any of the presenters. Start with Counselor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Counselor Campbell, I believe you're ahead of me. Do you mind me going first?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for the presentations and the information. Mr. Boylan, just a quick question. I was on MPC many years ago when we did a rezoning for an animal hospital. One of the concerns brought up at that time was either biohazards or the fact that in this day and age, folks get an idea that any type of medical facility may have things that some people want to access for recreational use, I'll put it that way. Are there any, is there anything in the DC that speaks to security or biohazards, or is that necessary?
There is not anything that deals with that in the DC bylaw, Counselor Carlson. It's probably best if the applicant answers that. I will state, though, that animal care major is an allowable use under the IG district and the FPD districts already, so it would be similar to that, but I'll let the applicants answer questions about the biowaste.
Mr. Boylan, if perhaps the applicant can speak to any measures that need to be in place or that are going to be in place?
Yeah, sure. Jacob, or Dr. Jacob Atzebel here. So I'm the owner-operator veterinarian, been in Lethbridge, practicing since 2002. And we are licensed and go through rigorous annual reviews by the Alberta Veterinary Medical Association. And it's a quality assurance program that is monitored on an annual basis. And one of the things that is checked there is sharps containers. And so any needles that have to be disposed of goes in a secured sharps container. There's no sharps, there's no bio materials of any kind that are allowed in the docked-off waste bin. So we have not had any issues in the hospitals I've been involved with with any kind of needles or sharps being an issue.
Thank you. No, I appreciate all the answers there. And just a quick question. You mentioned, I believe, in the presentation that you're seeking LEED certification, which is very exciting. Do you know what level you're going after?
Yeah, we're going for gold. So we've actually done a study, a feasibility study, with SATE, Southern Alberta Institute of Technology, and we're just finishing that. We got a grant to do that, and so we're really serious about it. We're not just saying it. We're going for gold for LEED and gold for wealth certification.
Awesome. Good to hear. Thank you very much.
And the whole point is, like Rob is pointing out, that we want to make a quality building, a facility that attracts and retains talent.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worshipful. I appreciate what you're doing here. I'm sorry, this is a non-rezoning question. It's just about the facility. Would you consider this to be sort of a new-to-Lethbridge sort of a facility, state-of-the-art? Like, I mean, I know that there's emergency facilities in Calgary that people tend to go to. Is this going to be sort of a place that they can go to other than Calgary?
Yeah, absolutely. We provide, you know, like we're building a facility that essentially is built to house five to seven veterinarians, providing small animal work, so cats and dogs primarily, but also other pets. And so it'll be a significant service provider, including urgency and emergency care. And it is a problem these days, even for clinics in Calgary, to offer that on a 24-hour basis, which is our intent.
Right, and you alluded to trying to get vets to come to Lethbridge and to stay here. I know that there is a real shortage of vets in Lethbridge, so this is a real inducer for them to come and stay.
Yeah, yeah, in all of Alberta, actually, there's a huge shortage. There was a news article the other day, and Alberta Veterinary Medical Association has implemented a task force to find out what they can do about the veterinary shortage.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Sorry I beared off a little bit, but appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Any further questions from Council? Hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon, following the public hearing. Thank you for your presentations.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to bylaw 6265. I call to order the public hearing for bylaw 6265, the Municipal Development Plan. The procedure for this hearing will be: We will begin by calling upon Maureen Garing, Manager, Planning and Development, to provide the background to the case. Those else who wish to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We will then ask three times if there is anybody else who wishes to make a presentation. City Council will then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading will be made by City Council immediately following the public hearing. I now call upon Maureen Garing to provide the background to the case. Welcome, Ms. Garing.
Good afternoon, Your Worship, and members of City Council. This is, we believe, our final public hearing on the draft municipal development plan. Next slide, please. We have provided a very comprehensive written submission for today's public hearing, and therefore, we have a short presentation today. I will speak very briefly about the project journey, the MDP review process, the contents, and the amendments that were made on May 18th. Next slide, please. So in previous presentations to City Council, we have described the project journey in four phases. At this point, we have rounded third and are heading for home plate with a document we believe provides the appropriate level of direction and guidance to achieve the outcomes of a city that is prosperous, healthy and diverse, culturally vibrant, well-designed, environmentally responsible, and supports the region. Next slide, please. So the timeline for review of the draft MDP is illustrated on the slide. Engagement with the public on the draft plan was aided by the week-long public hearing at the end of March. And the last time we were before you was on May 18th, when a number of amendments were made to the plan by City Council. Next slide, please. So in terms of the document, the sections are shown on the slide. As noted in the written submission, changes have been made throughout the document, the largest number of them occurring in Section 5, which is the policy section. Next slide, please. And the entire project team is here tonight to answer any further questions that Council members may have.
Perfect, thank you. I now call upon pre-registered speakers to present. As a reminder, presenters will have five minutes to speak to the issue. First speaker is Mark Lencuka. Is Mr. Lencuka there? Locked out. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? For a second time, is there any other member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? For a third and final time, is there any other member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing no other presenters, it is now time for City Council to ask questions of the presenters. Questions from Council? I see no questions in the queue.
Sorry, Mayor Spearman, my hand is...
Councilor Carlson?
Thank you, worship, through you to Ms. Garing, hello, Ms. Garing, and congratulate, I hear congratulations are in order. We're not letting any cats out of the bag as our new director of planning, so thank you. Just curious, because we did do quite a round of discussions on the MDP some time ago. I didn't get any feedback from the public following any of our amendments. Did your office receive any, and can you share any comments you may have heard?
No, Councilor Carlson, we actually didn't receive any feedback either.
So you were, your, your email was as silent as mine on this, okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman, and yes, congratulations, Ms. Garing, on the promotion. I will have to follow up with you, I've been wanting a speaker for another event, so I'll have to talk to you now that you have that job. Off, off topic. We, this is the first time in 10 years that we're redeveloping the MDP. So we have this new MDP, the one 10 years ago had some great things in it, but one of the things I know we heard was it didn't have enough teeth, it was hard to enforce. So we have spent now two years creating this new MDP. Is there more teeth to this one than we had in the past? Is this a stronger MDP? And does it sit us in a good place for the next 10 years, in your professional opinion?
So that's a good question, Councilor Croson. I know the wording of the current MDP, in some cases, was very flexible and very vague. But that's one of the things that we tried to tighten up, to actually have the policies move towards a direction. So something that we can actually measure in terms of getting us towards those outcomes that I mentioned earlier in our presentation. So whereas the previous MDP, I guess, or the current MDP, you could argue, you know, was you could make almost anything work in terms of how the policies were worded, we certainly have changed that aspect of the policies to, to definitely give staff, the community and council, more direction in terms of what's intended.
And if we do pass this one today, how soon would members of the public start seeing things roll out? Like, how far, how quickly can we action this if it is approved today? Or parts of it, I know it's a 10-year document.
So that's interesting, Councilor Croson, I actually did have that discussion today with one of the planners in terms of the implementation schedule. We will be looking to sort of sync up how we report and how this works with our corporate work plan as well. And then definitely with the council strategic plan, when that gets done with the new council. So I think we'll be laying the groundwork here over the summer, perhaps developing a tool in conjunction with some of our internal colleagues, such as our OPCI office, and understanding how we can really deliver the results to council in a way that makes sense and in a way that's in aligned with corporate outcomes as well.
So we could move on this pretty quickly, relatively speaking, for our plan. This, of course, is one of our higher-level plans, if approved, I mean, whatever MDP we have is a higher-level plan. Is there anything that you can think of that we should keep in mind as council that would automatically be out of, out of alignment with this? Is there something that we, you know, as we have to think of our work plan, is there something that we, that's going to be needed to change because of this?
So Councilor Croson, any plan that council approves with a new council, that there is that opportunity to, to have a bit of a revisit? We feel fairly confident, though, that the planned directions are based upon existing master plans that have already been approved by council, and existing work that's been done. Certainly, the speed at which some, some of the directions are moved towards is something that could be adjusted in terms of the overall implementation. I think it is important to keep in mind the temperature of the community, where the community is at in terms of wanting to get to these outcomes, how fast they're comfortable with going. And, and that's something that this council and the new council, we're certainly going to have to take into consideration.
So the vision of recent master plans and this all link together, essentially?
That's correct.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Dalton has popped in, did you have an answer for that, that you'd like to provide as well?
Thanks, Councilor Croson, just briefly, I'd like to reinforce what we said in the comment that you just shared, and, and we've talked to governance committee about this need to bring alignment across all of the various master plans and other types of plans that exist, and that that master plan below the MGA and the council strategic plan is that framework document. So there is work to do going forward to make sure we have a clear picture of what guidance council has directed through these various documents, and making sure that we keep council apprised of, of that, that body of direction, and that we give them the opportunity to, to direct change or, or tweaks where required. And that's certainly going to be important next fall with, with, following the, the next municipal election.
Perfect, thank you very much, and thank you all for all the work you've done on this. I think you have created a very great document moving ahead, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions from council? Nope, okay. I see none, I'd just like to thank Ms. Garing and her, her department and everyone who worked on this, thanks so much. So hearing no other questions, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon, following the public hearing. We'll now move on to bylaw 6236, the Westminster area redevelopment plan. I now call to order the public hearing for bylaw 6236, Westminster area redevelopment plan. The procedure for this hearing will be, we will begin by calling upon Genesis Havia Oreo, community planner, to provide the background to the case. Those else who wish to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We will then ask three times if there is anybody else who wishes to make a presentation. City council will then have the opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading will be made by city council immediately following the public hearing. I now call upon Genesis Havia Oreo to provide the background to the case. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, your worship, and members of council. The last item on the agenda for the public hearing today is bylaw 6236, a bylaw to adopt the Westminster area redevelopment plan. Next slide, please. My presentation will cover the topics presented here, next slide. Planning and design is bringing this forward to provide current redevelopment policies for the Westminster neighborhood. If the ARP in question today is approved, it will replace the existing ARP which was adopted in 1985, next slide. The council review process for the Westminster ARP began last year with a first reading on August 24th. Since then, the, we had the opportunity to host a public hearing, and from there, council also identified several amendments to be made to the ARP, and they're also approved the last time we were here presenting to you on May 18th, next slide, please. Both council and administration brought forward amendments, and they're listed here. Please note that there are two amendments that have not been approved by council and could be approved by council before a third reading of this bylaw. One of the amendments is to fix a duplicate policy that resulted during the document formatting, and the second is to add a land acknowledgement statement to the document. The details on these two are in one of the attachments to the submission, next slide, please. Now I'd like to provide a refresher to the ARP process and the document as well. We'll begin by the neighborhood boundary as presented here, next slide. This project began in 2016, and through the various phases, there were, there was extensive community engagement and also internal department involvement for this project. The goal is to have the ARP approved, and beyond this, there's an implementation phase where planning and design will report back to council on a yearly basis. And in addition to this, city administration will carry out several action items over the next few years as identified in section five of this document. Next slide, please. The engagement process was robust throughout the project. A key part of the engagement was the advisory committee that was brought together to guide the policy direction, next slide, please. A highlight from working with this group was building relationships with residents and eventually hosting an open house with the members of the advisory committee, actually presenting the ARP policies alongside the planners, next slide, please. The next few slides will provide an overview of the ARP's policy framework. Policy guidance is provided in two sections of the document. Section three geographically breaks down the neighborhood into sub-areas and provides specific guidance for each. Section four provides overarching guidance for all development within the neighborhood, and it does align with section three, next slide. Today, we're focusing on section three, the section is based on the map presented here. Within this section, there are two levels of information. First, we have future development direction, which provides an overview of the type of development that would be supported in the specific geographic area. And second, we have built-in policies which provide specific guidance for site and building design, next slide, please. The largest sub-area within the ARP is the inner neighborhood, where the predominant building type is single detached dwelling. And the direction for this sub-area continues to support this, next slide. The medium-density sub-areas AMB presented here and in the following slide are intended to be maintained as hubs for multifamily housing, next slide. This is the location of sub-area B, next slide, please. This next area is south of Second Avenue North within neighborhood boundaries, and it's considered the special interest area because it's in close proximity to the rail tracks. Throughout the plan engagement process, concerns were brought, brought forward about the risks residents living in this area could be exposed to in the event of a rail incident. The intent of the development direction for this area is to maintain its low-density building form as a means to not increase the number of households living within this area and exposed to potential risks. There's also an action item in section five of the ARP that directs city administration to complete a hazards, risks, and vulnerability assessment, also known as HRVAs. This assessment would identify all potential risks for the neighborhood, including and beyond rail incidents, and through this process, emergency preparedness tools would also be developed, next slide. The east commercial sub-areas are intended to be maintained as commercial development. The development direction intends to maintain its auto-oriented design while incorporating pedestrian-friendly elements as well, next slide, please. The 13th Street North corridor will continue to support a range of commercial uses, and the development direction intends to encourage commercial base that are suitable for local businesses and buildings that are designed to enhance the pedestrian experience, next slide, please. Along Fifth Avenue corridor, residential intensification is supported up to high density. This corridor and the direction within here, for this area, recognizes that 13th Street North has the potential to become a vibrant commercial corridor, which may increase demand for sites suitable to accommodate commercial uses. And for this reason, commercial and mixed-use development would also be supported between 13th Street and 15th Street along Fifth Avenue North, next slide, please. The ARP also provides guidance for the parks located within the neighborhood based on the feedback received during the engagement. And this wraps up the overview of the ARP policies found in section three, which are truly the drivers of what the neighborhood could see in terms of development over the next few years, next slide, please. In terms of future touchpoints for council, planning and design will be providing yearly implementation progress reports. Additionally, you will receive updates on any projects outlined in section five, which is the implementation section. One example of a project that could come to council is hazard risk and vulnerability assessment, which is due to come or be completed within one year of plan adoption, next slide, please. The ARP in question today is in line with the SSRP and the existing ICSP MDP, and I have, I have checked the policies of the updated MDP, and it is also aligned with the updated MDP, next slide, please. The policies within the ARP reflect the feedback received by stakeholders involved through the engagement process. Additionally, council has made changes to the ARP that align with the feedback received at the public hearing from residents. And lastly, the ARP does comply with overarching documents, next slide, please. It is our recommendation that city council approve the amendments proposed today, and also give third reading to bylaw 6236. This concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that, we may get to questions after any further presentations. So are there any members of the public that wish to make a presentation on this matter? Please come forward.
We know you, but please state your name for the record.
Thank you, worship, and council. My name is Darlene McLean. There was an email from Genesis to the few remaining board members, and I just wanted to point out that actually, it should be pointed out that the amendments were mostly brought forward and agreed to by city council. Apparently, some councillors wanted to see some kind of data that showed the extent, the extent of more real density numbers. Apparently, city staff and subdivision and development appeal board members will actually, oh, hopefully, city staff and subdivision and development appeal board members will actually read the details in the WARP when they consider higher densities of developments, et cetera, or any at all. As Westminster has taken on a considerable amount of affordable housing, et cetera, to many, compared to many, if not most neighborhoods. The many years of urban estate, exclusive residential developments, et cetera, et cetera, approved by community planners and councils, example being all houses should be single-family only, has served to increase the social and economic division within the city. This has helped fuel unrest movements like Take Back the North. This was part of sponsored numerous gatherings attended by police reps and councillors. On one occasion, the mayor attended, not to mention the years and years of only being allowed one avenue of appeal, subdivision and development appeal board compared to other neighborhoods. Westminster needs a WARP that stands alone and strong to further fair housing and keep mindful of the social injustice of residential housing segregation. A totally independent evaluation of fair housing and segregation in Lethbridge would be enlightening to some. The departments and processes that enable this condition and already have much of this information may feel compelled to find their will to change, thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? For a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? For a third and final time, is there any other member of the public that wishes to make a presentation on this matter? Hearing no other presenters, it's now time for city council to ask questions of any of the presenters. Questions from council? We have no questions.
Yeah, Mayor Spearman, sorry, Councilor Kaufman.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Ms. McLean, can I just ask you to come back to the microphone, please? Sorry, just let me know when you're there, please.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I, I thought I was picking up what you were laying down, but maybe just ask for a bit of clarity. You've been an incredible proponent of this project all along. I know that it's, it's had its ups and downs, but we're at a point now of, of approval. Are you in support of what you're seeing in front of you, or, or are you not? I just, I'm looking for some clarity on your statements.
Well, there's compromises. Well, there's compromises, of course, a person has to be open to. Of course, I would be happy to see an area structure plan like Riverstone has, or the crossings, or Navmer, of those types of neighborhoods, but -- or else a moratorium on increased density until the other neighborhoods have reached the same level as Westminster has.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I understand compromise tremendously well, so, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Councilor Higgin?
Just a sec, Darlene, sorry. Ms. McLean. So, similar to the question of Councilor Kaufman, I want to put it another way. If you're sitting in one of our chairs here, and what was presented with you, would you consider there's compromise with already supporting it at a later time? Or I just, I was similar to Councilor Kaufman in that, listening to your presentation, I just want to know if there's, if you feel there's compromise, if this is passed, we can still do those compromises, is that correct?
Well, it depends on a number of things, like, we would like to see the subdivision and development appeal board be videoed so people can see some of the things that go on, like, we've brought the inner neighborhood study that was done in 2006. We've brought that to SDAB hearings, and we were told that we were wasting their time. We brought derailment reports and begged them to quit cramming duplexes on forty-eight-foot lots and that sort of thing in that area for years, and, oh, it just goes on and on. But at any rate, we'd like to have some kind of a review of who's teaching, like, when you look at the guidance that the SDAB members have, their manual sort of thing, it doesn't really address specifically, unless they've got some new training material that we're not aware of, it doesn't really address a lot of the issues that Westminster brings forward to an SDAB hearing. And so you wonder who's training these people. So, but we would like, one of the ways that we could also, yeah, one time, I think it was Joe Morrow, who had been on SDAB for years and years and years, said, I don't, he said right in front of city council, he said, "I don't really know what we're supposed to be doing there. I guess it just comes down to whether we like it or not." Okay? Now, he remembers that, Parker remembers that, and Jeff Green went into a lengthy explanation that SDAB members can look at other social, economic factors, right, and community factors on the ground. And we brought that, when we would bring that to SDAB members in hopes that they would, in fact, consider other issues on the ground, we were told that we were trying to tell them how to do their job.
So I guess, I guess the question, sorry to interrupt, is just, it's procedure with ARPs in general, by the sounds of it, not as much with this particular one, it's just in general.
Yeah, exactly. Like, we could be talking about pretending that Westminster was Riverstone, and we were sitting here today deciding whether or not they're going to have this fancy this and that fancy that, or whatever, and this much density and no more, and all that sort of stuff. We could, you know, it could be just a fantastic ARP, but it's what happens after the fact that determines whether or not it was worth all this time and trouble and expense, sort of thing. If nobody reads it and nobody honors its intent.
Something council could look at later as a resolution or something, because it's more procedure than the actual ARP that you're talking about for Westminster is what I would.
Yeah, I mean, we'd like it to be at a certain level, and we'd like it to be honored to a certain level, but we have no guarantee of that, that development officials and that SDAB people even read it.
Thank you for that. And if I can just follow up to Ms. Gering, hearing this, is this something we look at it for all ARPs as far as procedure and the best way to work through these ARPs? Is that, does that make sense to you?
So, Councilor Higgin, I will perhaps separate the conversation per se. So in terms of staff that are issuing development decisions, they are bound by any statutory plan that is in place. The ability of subdivision and development appeal board to consider other things is quite separate. It has nothing to do really with an ARP. SDAB looks at both subdivision and development permits, whether or not there could be an ARP in place. Right? So the two are very different, but we can certainly, you know, work with city clerks and provide sort of more of a context around the function of SDAB in the future if council would like.
Yes, thank you. And I see that as being different. That was what I had, had the question, that it's not about ARPs. It sounds like it's more, you know, some concerns with procedures that you have at this time then. All right, thanks so much, appreciate it, Ernie.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. That just raises the question. SDAB is trained provincially, isn't it? Do the volunteers not get training from the provincial jurisdiction?
So that will be a question of city clerks?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
The members are trained provincially, it's mandatory training.
So that's not something city council would have a say in?
It's an extensive training manual, and it is set by the province, delivered by a contract company.
Thank you. I know it was off tangent, but it was just, I had that question raised from Ms. McLean's presentation. Thank you very much.
Any further questions from council? I see none. Hearing none, I now declare the public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon, following the public hearing. So we'll now revert to the public, the city council meeting. Are we ready to go? Okay, council, just looking at the order of the meeting, do you want to deal with the temporary mandatory face coverings bylaw first? We can do one, two, and possibly the third reading? And then go back to the regular order of the agenda? I'm proposing that's what we do. Is there any objection? Hearing none. We'll deal with it as follows, okay? So now we'll move to bylaw six-two-three-nine, temporary mandatory face coverings bylaw. Moved by Councilor Parker for first reading, be it resolved that bylaw six-two-three-nine, temporary mandatory face coverings bylaw be repealed.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm gonna just hold off. I think most of my debate was spoken in my OBR, so I'll hold up at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Point of order, it's first reading.
Yeah, it's first reading too, Mr. Mayor, so that'd be the second reading. So I call the question on the first reading. Thank you, Councilor Kaufman.
Question's been called on the first reading, all in favor? Are any opposed? I hear none. For second reading, from Councilor Parker, bylaw six-two-three-nine, be it resolved that temporary mandatory face coverings bylaw be repealed.
Mayor, I believe that my discussion, my debate was discussed in my OBR, so I would just, I'll hold off, thank you, unless there's some other comments.
Okay. Is there any discussion or debate from council? Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Question for the city manager or designate. Right now, you know, if we repeal this bylaw, what would be the process, and how easy would it be if we wanted to bring one back in in the fall?
I'll ask the city solicitor to jump in here shortly around the process piece, but to your second question, I would, in terms of adjusting any changes in this moving forward, it would be the same process that council went through the first time. But I would ask the solicitor to please speak to the process question.
It could happen in one of two ways. We could either receive a direction through an OBR to prepare a bylaw with as much specific direction as council desired, and we would bring that back for three readings. Alternatively, if the situation was such that administration felt that they should recommend this to council, they could, of course, propose a draft to council as well, which council may or may not accept. So those would be the two options, like any other bylaw we do here at the city of Lethbridge.
But just from a procedural point of view, if we repeal this, there's nothing like the six-month reconsideration or anything like that. It could be done as necessary if needed.
I haven't considered whether the procedural bylaw would force all that, but I would, I think from a legal perspective, you would be allowed to legislate this bylaw again.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Just, Councilor Kaufman, sorry, Mayor Spearman. Just for clarity, because two bylaws are proposed, which one have we just read for first reading? I apologize for that, I should have asked that prior to first.
It was bylaw six-two-three-nine repealing.
Yeah, but there's a, do we not have two bylaws? I've got two bylaws on my agenda.
There are two drafts in the report.
Two drafts, yes. Which one are we deliberating?
And if you choose the second one, I believe we still need input as to what the desired specified date would be.
Sorry, am I confusing process? Am I lost here?
No, you're right, we have two versions.
We have two versions. I just need to know which one we are considering at this time, which one has been chosen.
I believe option one was the one presented because there wasn't a date specified in option two, and so if option two would have been specified, or the one presented, a date would have been proposed.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, anything further on the repeal motions? Okay. So, any debate?
Once again, Mr. Mayor, I opened up just in case, and I do believe there's a few questions asked, but I still think there's, unless questions have been answered, I can go into my closing, or if members of council want to add to the debate.
Beat. Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Open for summer is rather an interesting phrase. Sometimes it's not what is said, but what is left out. Open for summer makes no promise that we'll have a fall, makes no promise that school will go back, even though we all hope it will, makes no promise that we will have fall sports for the kids to go back to, makes no promises that businesses will stay open in the fall. I am cognizant of all of that, that we are making a gamble, whatever we do, it's a pandemic, everything is a gamble. But I'm also aware, having heard from the city solicitor, that we could bring a bylaw back if needed, and if the number is warranted at that time. So while I am incredibly concerned about the youth twelve and under who cannot get vaccinated and are certainly the most vulnerable going ahead, while I am certainly aware that we live in a region of southern Alberta that has dealt with measles outbreaks and whooping cough outbreaks that many other communities haven't had to deal with, because overall we just have lower immunization rates in southern Alberta than other communities, even though Lethbridge does awesome, we have to realize we live in a region that has, in some ways, a different vaccination rate than the city itself. I recognize all of that, but I also recognize that we are dealing with a jurisdictional issue here as well, that this is a decision that is a provincial jurisdiction that we were given permission to make a decision in by making the bylaw. But I will be supporting the repeal of this bylaw, one, because of the seasonality of this virus. It is summer, and virus tends, this virus tends to, from what we've seen the last year and a half, be less of a problem during the summer, and so this will give us an opportunity to enjoy the summer, knowing that if things go bad in the fall, there could be decisions made. And, but the other thing, of course, is moving ahead now. This puts it all firmly back into the province's hands, so if things go wrong, we also will be looking to the province to fix whatever happens in the future as well. So I recognize all the concerns moving ahead. As I mentioned earlier, I've talked to several families who have concerns about their kids that are under twelve, but I will be supporting the repealing bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Croson?
Thanks, Mayor Spearman. Don't want to debate this to death, but I figure it's important to at least say a few things why it's been a struggle for me, maybe some of my colleagues on council regarding our mask, our face covering bylaw and the mandate. I will be supporting the removal at this time, even though I am hesitant and very concerned. I am concerned about the rising cases of the Delta, and now the Delta Plus variant. I'm concerned about the folks that haven't been able to access even one or both of their vaccines yet, and I am concerned for those folks. However, I think at this time, the premier, our government, or provincial government, has been very clear that they have a desire to lift this mandate and to be open for summer. And one of the concerns I have, if we continue with our face covering mandate or bylaw in defiance of the political mood, is the confusion it causes. We've all, I think, witnessed frontline staff in our facilities, but also in the private sector. There are people who have pushed them on it, and it's unfair to them to just keep sowing confusion. I think one message, whether I agree with the message or not, I think one message is better. Now, the other reason that I think I'm more confident with repealing the bylaw at this time is the lack of enforcement that we provided. We put in a bylaw, and then we didn't enforce it. And I've spoken out against doing that on many And I've spoken out against doing that on many occasions. I remember some of the provisions in our Parks bylaw several years ago, I said, this is this is a ridiculous part of this bylaw. We said, well, don't worry, we'll never enforce it. And I am a big believer in don't put forward laws and bylaws and rules if you're not willing to enforce it. At the time, I thought, you know, we need to do a lot of education, and I think we've done an excellent job of educating our public. I think we had better, did even a better job today when we had Dr. Luchak, I think it was, talk about the importance of masks and that masks are effective. We still get those messages from people who think, no, actually masks cause the pandemic. They don't. They're very, very effective. And I would hope, once again, I don't want to keep harping on this, but show some kindness. There are going to be folks who want to continue wearing their masks. I've got some people in my close circle of friends who are unable to get the vaccine at this time. I will be masking up because I will not be taking a risk with their health and safety. So please show some respect, show some kindness, and I will be supporting the removal of our mandate at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Higgin.
I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate our community. We're we're here today because of the effort of the community, and I just, I want to say much more than just thank you to the community for doing all the hard work, and we're glad we're at this point today. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Morrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm sure this is has been very difficult for everyone, and I'm sure that both sides of this issue have faced criticism, and people in our community have had to deal with a lot, doesn't matter what side of this you're on. Now, I guess I'll speak for myself as a being called an anti-masker. First of all, I'm not an anti-masker. I never have been an anti-masker. I respect and follow the rules that are laid out in front of us, and if ever I went anywhere, I wore a mask. I go back to day one when we had this bylaw, and I voted against it simply because I felt it was not our mandate and it was the province, and as we've all talked about, we listen, try and listen to the experts. And whether we like it or not, the experts in this particular case are the province. Yeah, we put our mask bylaw in before the province did, and that was probably a good thing. But once the province stepped in and put their bylaw in, then I felt that there was no need for us to have ours. I have to agree with councillor Higgin where he mentions about the community. I think our community did very well, and you know what? There's always going to be the handful of people that are going to oppose and argue and, you know, do the the things that we don't want everybody to do, because we all, we we want everybody to respect everybody's wishes and needs. And you know what? I guess I put a lot of faith and trust in our community. I've lived here all my life, and I believe that people in Lethbridge take pride in being Lethbridgeans, and I think most of us, the great majority of us, do show respect for others. And I don't think that's going to stop. Now, we can't change the few that maybe will be what we don't want them to be, and and you know what? I guess that's okay. It's not okay, but you can't do it, you can't change it. But for the majority of our public, we have always had respect. I have always said, and I have stated in all my times that I have voted against this mask bylaw, and again, I'm not an anti-masker, because I wear my mask, my mask every time I go. But I just felt that it was the province's mandate and not ours. They have the experts, and the experts pass on the messages to our medical experts here in our region. And I think that if, most of us, I think, would respect the wishes of each business owner or business businesses and and what they want to do, and if, and they can still do that. Wherever you go, wherever we go right now, if they still want to have people that attend their business or their restaurant or whatever it is, if they want us to wear a mask, they have the right to do so, just like no shoes, no shirt, no service. And I I firmly believe in that, and I believe that the members of our community would greatly respect that. And I think that's, to me, that has been the issue all along. I have faith and trust in our community, I always have, and I always believe that our community will step up and do the right thing. And I don't believe that we need to be the enforcers, which sometimes we come across as being, even though that's not our way of doing things, and I don't believe that's the way we want to be, but sometimes we come across as being enforcers. And I guess I respect the wishes of all the businesses and the people and and all of that, and we as a city and our own public buildings, we can deal with that, and and that, I think, is our mandate, that we can control and do and say what we want and put in procedures, policies on our own public buildings. But for us to dictate to others on what to what they should or should not do, especially when the province stepped up and created their mandatory mask bylaw throughout the province, I I just believe that that was the right thing, and I believe that our community supported that. Now, the province has decided that, for whatever reason, and I guess we can all question whether the province is doing the right thing or not, I don't believe it's our role to continuously bash our government. I believe that we need to work with our government and support our provincial government. And I think by them making the decisions that they've made, I don't think they've made them lightly, I think they understand what their role is. And I'm sure that they want to protect not only people in Lethbridge, as we want to protect the people of Lethbridge, but they want to protect the four and a half million people that live in the province. And so for that reason, and those reasons all along, I have always suggested that the province, whatever the province and the experts in the province say and do, we need to support. And this is just the final step, and I'm glad we've reached to this point, and I would fully urge, and I know I and my family will respect the wishes of each individual business owner and restaurant and wherever else you want to, we go. If they want to continue to have people masking, so be it, and I think our people in Lethbridge, I have a lot of faith and trust, and I believe that the majority of us, the huge majority of us, are very respectful people, and we respect one another. So I'm glad that we have reached this day, and I'm so looking forward to people just being able to live their lives and make decisions based on what they believe is best, and that they don't need politicians to get in their way. For that reason, I will support this resolution.
Okay, who will close? Councillor Parker, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to each and every one of you for your comments today, but also being the voice of your constituents over the last year. There's times, of course, we've butted heads, things have gotten very heated, but it's almost symbolic of what the community has gone through, and when you talk to people in the community, you watch what's on social media. I'm just glad that we can, don't have, because we're not having closure on this because we can't put our guard down with COVID. People have done their part to date, but people in the community have to continually do their part, as the mayor has stated in the past. Wear the mask when appropriate, wear the mask when you feel comfortable, welcome people, no matter what side of the issue is on, get vaccinated, make good choices, make healthy choices, but more importantly, just be respectful of one another, and I would just call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, now I'm going to ask for authorization to proceed with third reading. Moved by councillor Parker, seconded by councillor Higgin, that we now move to to third reading. This vote must be unanimous. Simple question?
There's no debate on that, just call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none, thank you, we can move to third reading. Third reading, be it resolved that bylaw six, three, zero, two, a bylaw to repeal bylaw six, two, three, nine, the temporary mandatory face coverings bylaw be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Councillor Parker?
Call the question, Mr. Mayor.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous, thank you. Okay, now we'll move to four point two. And Festival Square Market Plaza construction tender update, that is a presentation from Mr. Andrew Malcolm, I believe. Mr. Malcolm, are you with us?
I am, and I think I'm going to let Ms. Trent tee this presentation up, and then I'll I'll hop in.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Good afternoon, members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to return today to discuss the MSP program, municipal stimulus program, and specifically Festival Square. We really appreciated the questions that came from council at our last presentation, and we're really excited to have the opportunity to explore this further and come to some some great options for council's consideration, but more importantly, to address the items with the province that would help inform the various options that we wanted to bring forward today. So with that, I'll pass it over to Andrew to go through the presentation.
Thank you very much. Next slide, please. So as a quick summary, we're here to provide that information that we received from the province and to provide council with a revised plan for the municipal stimulus program funded projects. And as Ms. Trent alluded to, this is in response to the presentation on June 15th as it related to the Festival Square Market Plaza and that project being over budget at the time. Council, of course, requested administration reach out to the province, and again, we're here to provide that information. Next slide, please. So in our inquiry to the province, we specifically took forward the questions that council had of administration, and I'll run through those. Additional funds to deal with the inflation or other pressures, and the province was quite adamant that there is no additional funds to deal with inflation or the pressures. All communities and all projects are having to deal with this in their variety of ways. Question to redirect municipal stimulus project funding to new projects. That was not recommended, as it would require approval from the minister, which would take months, and we're already into the summer of the year of the expenditure. Could there be an extension for the granted, for the timeline? There have been none to date, and the expectation of the province is still that all projects funded through this are completed by December 31st of 2021. Question regarding flexibility to flow funds between approved municipal stimulus projects, and the answer was yes. Just as a quick reminder, we had three projects approved, having Festival Square and two projects at the airport, one for lighting and one for pavement rehabilitation. And our last question was around leveraging all the funding, and there was definitely a mutual desire that all funds allocated to the city of Lethbridge get used in Lethbridge, and that we do everything in our power to use all of that money and not return any to the province, which I'm sure council would agree with as well. Next slide, please. So just a couple of key benefits that we would have highlighted previously, but projects were to be catalytic in nature. This was a desire of the province and of council, and this is both in the short and long term, and we believe that the two projects or three projects in two areas really leverage and build off of previous or recent strategic decisions and projects, and as well provide those jobs to our community in the short term through construction and long term through projects that really create and stimulate economic activity in our community. Next slide, please. So we went back and were able to do a deeper dive into all of the MSP projects. So as of June 21st, which is still relevant today, there is one point, just over 1.4 million of projected surplus within the three projects, and this table breaks that down in a little bit more detail. So I'll just run through this in terms of the original total column. This is as approved by council previously. These were the initial budget items that were brought forward to council at a previous date. The actual cost projected column is is where these projects are currently sitting as of today, within their within their scope, and these numbers are based off of tendered bid documents. The variance identifies the as of today difference between what was budgeted and the actual cost, and you'll see that the Festival Square one is indicating that 485,000 over budget, which is why we were at council on June 15th. And you will see that for the airfield lighting project, it is showing at 400,000 in the surplus, and the airfield pavement rehabilitation is showing 1.5 million in surplus. When you calculate those three, one project being over budget and two being under budget, the collective surplus is 1.4, just over 1.4 million. In terms of the narrative, I just wanted to take an opportunity to jump back to some of the questions that council had in the previous presentation. There was a lot of attention on the inflation, and I just wanted to be clear that that is a pressure on some of the materials and products in the project. But the primary reason for the project being over budget was, A, that it was, the budgeting was done at a concept level, and B, that we, like many revitalization projects, had to bring in items that were originally out of scope, that made sense through life cycling and and just project feasibility, to gain efficiencies and to do something that we wouldn't have to then come back and undo those improvements to attack or to deal with. In terms of the airport projects, they're largely over budget for a similar reason on the concepting, in that concept, estimates were done on the concept side this time in their favor. But also, I want to draw attention that the ACAP funding from the federal government came in after this allocation, and we've been able to leverage that airport-specific funding to achieve some of these projects, therefore freeing up a little bit of of money.
Andrew, if I may, when you spoke, you said the airport was over budget. As a point of clarification, the airport is under budget, to to Mr. Malcolm's point, attributed to ACAP, ACAP funding that came through, which negated the need for for the MSP funding. So I just wanted to clarify, just a point of clarification there.
Thank you, Lisa. That's a, yeah, definitely under budget for both the airport projects. So next slide, please. So we, administration has gone back and and brought forward three options for council's consideration. I will just run through those quickly, and then we'll talk about our preferred or recommended option from administration. So option A would be as presented last or two weeks ago to council, that would achieve the 485,000 in additional funding to deliver the Festival Square project as delivered. That extra funding going to the water and wastewater servicing, the lane rehab, the community lighting, and the entry sign in the square. This would allow for 1.4, 1.5 million to stay associated to the airport, which would allow for additional paving of the Bravo taxiway. And that, what that would do is that would increase the opportunities for the airside leasing abilities. Option B, which is which is administration's recommendation, would provide that $485,000 that I just went over to Festival Square. It would also allow us to complete a few additional items that we originally had scaled back because we knew this project was going to be over budget. One of the councillor comments or questions in our last meeting was, could we not just do this to a bronze standard? And I kind of alluded to that, I think we're all ready at the bronze standard. This would bring us to that higher standard and pull off all of the features of this square, Festival Square project that were originally dreamed of through the community and in the public engagement processes. So that would be an additional $325,000, bringing that total to 810 towards Festival Square. This would leave just over $1 million to go to further paving at the airport for Bravo Taxiway, and and this adjustment would, just in terms of what that equates to at the airport, would be about 100 to 150 meters of extra pavement for those airside leasing opportunities. And then option C would just be simply to cancel the Festival Square project and allocate all of those funds to the airports and and pave as much as possible. Next slide, please. So administrations?
I apologize, Malcolm. If I may add, bear in mind, in terms of the responses from the province, I just want to remind council that in in formulating these options and recommendations, we are looking to fully utilize all the funds. So that's part of the rationale in terms of positioning these various options, and then ultimately what administration wanted to bring forward in terms of our recommendation. And then ultimately, what administration wanted to bring forward in terms of our recommendation.
Thank you. So administration, as we went back, we really wanted to provide a balanced approach to this allocation of stimulus funding. We believe we've identified two strategic locations in our community, as well as two different segments of economic recovery. We believe that both these projects leverage synergies with recent decisions and projects, including Festival Square, the Third Avenue reconstruction, the incentive programs, the success with patios and parklets, and the recently supported SAG expansion. At the airport, we believe we're leveraging the purchase of the airport, the master planning, and as well as the terminal and waterline upgrades. So we believe we really do have a good package of stimulus here. So our recommendation is administration recommends to redistribute the projected surplus on approved MSP projects as per option B on the previous slide. This would bring the total projects, Festival Square, to 1.71 million. The airport paving to 4.653, and would leave the airport lighting project, which is complete, at 5.7 million. There's additional slides in your deck which provides some supporting information to the variety of grants that we've been looking at throughout this process and can be used as such. So with that, I will conclude my part of the presentation and would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Thank you, Ms. Trent, Mr. Malcolm, for the additional work, for the additional information. Really appreciate that. We've been doing the airport in phases, because we obviously, we didn't have enough money for everything. What would the next phase be at the airport if we had additional funding? Do we have something queued up for that or not? And I realize this wasn't a question that was asked two weeks ago. So it wouldn't bother me if you don't have an answer to that. But I know that there was sort of another block that would be considered the next step we'd be taking forward.
Mr. Malcolm, go ahead.
Yeah, I could take a stab at that, Counselor Kaufman. When we reached out to the province, they were flexible in us moving funding between. But it was clear that we had to remain spending those funds on projects that were within scope or within the original scope. So for the paving project, it would have to go towards more paving at the airport. And that's why really this additional funding would go to just that, more paving, which would increase the airside leasing opportunities at the airport. And then that would really set us up for the next stages at the airports, which are more on the land development side, on the non-airside. There is also the opportunity that the ACAP funding is a reoccurring grant opportunity. And so there are future opportunities for airport-related grants through that program. As it relates to any of the other projects, I probably am gonna step back and let Mr. Dalton or Ms. Trent step in to speak on the airport.
Just to add quickly, Counselor Kaufman, there was some conversation with council when we were looking at how council might want to allocate these various pots of funding. And there was a sequencing issue with moving to the next series of projects for the airport. And if I recall, it had to do with contractor availability. So there is, there's more information we can get council around what those next steps are. But I do recall that being discussed with council. And the reason not to sort of add more onto that was there was a sequencing issue. Certain things in the terminal had to be done first before we could move to the next step. But we can look to bring that information back to council at some point.
Okay. Would ACAP funding go towards that? Or could?
Again, I don't know. I don't know if we have any grant expertise on the call here, but I do know that ACAP funding is very limited in scope. So I would just hesitate to say that it would. I know in some of the conversations we had with the federal government around ACAP through trying to figure out which grants we would best be able to combine and leverage, ACAP was largely focused on the safety and service side of air travel and less on ergonomics, if you will.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Counselor Kaufman, and in support of Mr. Dalton, we do have a document that we prepared that contemplates the various project sequencing and funding that we can certainly share with council. And as it relates to MSP and in support of Mr. Malcolm's comments, this would be sort of exhausting every and all paving opportunities and in conjunction with the lighting project. So as it relates to MSP funding, it's zeroed in on phasing of paving-specific projects.
Anything further, Counselor Kaufman?
Sorry, Mayor Spearman. No, that was it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, Your Worship. This sounds like a really great news story here today. And it's nice to see that we can get the Festival Square from a bronze to maybe silver and maybe gold. But I just, just on that, you know, we talked about Festival Square, talking about how it's good for the downtown. Maybe, Mr. Malcolm, can you give us a sense of how significant it is? And what is the concept about Festival Square that's going to bring the rejuvenation down to the downtown? And I'm thinking England winning over Germany, for one thing. But anyway, that's another thing.
Yes. So thank you, Counselor Campbell, for your question. I could probably sit here and speak about all the different ways that this was gonna enhance downtown. But I think the biggest reason, and it's tied to COVID, is just how the public and the community are going to utilize public space. You know, the concept of outdoors being more comfortable, social distancing, as well as buying local and supporting local. I think those are all things that picked up a lot of traction throughout COVID. And one of the spaces, things that have been identified through a number of our studies through Harvard City Master Plan and Harvard City Committee is outdoor performance space. An outdoor space that is easily accessible and bookable by vendors, buskers, entertainers, those types of things. Right now, Festival Square is in fact a public space that can be bookable. But the challenge is, is it operates as parking the rest of the time. So if someone wants to book that space, they have to be out at 4:00 AM with things to block off the space so that they can get there before the first car. Sometimes that's easy, sometimes that's not so easy. And then they have to go through a whole bunch of processes to deal with the parking meters and all sorts of things. There's no electrical plugins, there's no lighting. And so it just really is not, it hasn't functioned as it was always dreamed to be. This process, this project will allow us to really create a barrier-free space, both from accessibility but as well as access to businesses and entertainers. They'll provide electricity, really good lighting, so people can feel safe when they're attending different events. And really just create a really vibrant outdoor space that works all year round. So again, that's a lot, actually my version of a short explanation, but I think there's multiple reasons.
I think, to your point, vibrancy downtown, the parklets has been such a huge success, and people are using them, right? This is a forebearer to what could happen. Yeah, I guess that's not a question, just a...
I agree.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Your Worship.
Okay, any further questions on what's presented or on the options? Okay, there's none? Okay, I have a resolution from Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Mayor Spearman?
Yes.
Sir Spearman, if we're moving to resolution now, because you haven't read it yet, I would like to propose option C as at least a starting point for debate. I know the motion is written as option B. I don't know if you want to read it and then we amend it, but I just thought it might be easier if we start with option C.
Can we put the three options on the screen so council can see them all? Okay, thank you. All right, council can see them all. So Counselor Kaufman is proposing the resolution. Be resolved that city council approve the redistribution of projected surplus municipal stimulus program MSP funding on previously approved MSP projects as presented in option C.
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. It's Joe.
And then it goes on to say amend the 2018 to 2027 CIP grant municipal stimulus program allocations and corresponding totals to reflect the following. And then we would adjust the dollars. So airport renovation and paving would become, would add 2,675,000. And cancel Festival Square project, 775,000 in unspent reallocation. And number three, direct the city manager to proceed on construction of the projects. Okay, Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. And again, thank you to Ms. Trent and Mr. Malcolm and everyone else for putting together the information. Really appreciated that. I reviewed the options that were put in front of us. And my, I have a couple of concerns with option B. One being that, you know, a couple of meters to the north, we have this beautiful park that we just don't seem to know what to do with. We don't have necessarily a similar performing space, but we have performing space there. We have actually covered walkway for outdoor venues that may actually require coverage. We've got a beautiful place that for some reason, we like to ignore. And I don't know why that is. And it's an asset that's not being utilized. And here we're talking about putting money into another asset across the street. May provide different opportunities and different flavors. But for me, if we're gonna be putting money into something in the downtown core, I would prefer to see Galt Gardens being the target or the focus of that investment. The other thing about option C that I like is we've got an airport that we are trying really hard to get to a space and a place and a scope at which we can start attracting others back to it. A place where people can actually fly out of here instead of having to drive up the road two and a half hours to Calgary. We're also looking at developing the, all the support services, the airside. And this would actually help us complete the foundational, no pun intended, but foundational infrastructure unnecessary for that, which would then give Opportunity Lethbridge the opportunity to go out and start marketing, start promoting that. So for me, it's about taking the money and focusing it specifically on the airport. I recognize the advantage that Festival Square could provide certainly to the downtown core. I'm incredibly sensitive to the fact that it does offer an advantage to one specific business. And I'm very conscious of that, about the way that the flow and the way that the space is used. And I think there needs to be reconsideration about how we interact within that space. But ultimately, it's about the fact we've got Galt Gardens, and we just, we ignore it, we don't use it. And I, well, there are many reasons for that. And maybe we need to start addressing those reasons. But it's primarily just, let's finish the airport, let's not continue to do it in drips and drabs. Let's get it to a point where Opportunity Lethbridge can start marketing the crap out of it. We can get significant air service in there, we can start moving people back through it again now that we're moving into a time of people actually having that opportunity. So I'll leave that as my opening. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question. What's the value of apron B? What's the economic value? Can somebody answer that?
Your Worship, give me a bit of an information on that. So apron or taxiway B is a larger component. It's estimated the total rollout of that is around 5 million. So that's why you see inside of this resolution, where it says the maximum amount of grant funding, we'll try to maximize the most we can do in space. So two points, you know, I believe the number is around 2.6 million in option C. And that would require about 1,000 feet of runway on taxiway B.
Okay. And in terms of the business plan, what would that extra runway do for us? Is it, would it attract a bigger airplane?
I will try to answer this one, too. My understanding from talking to Mr. Kelly in Opportunity Lethbridge that this will actually give some more runway or taxiway space for the commercial development. So it actually promotes the commercial development, which is other pieces of work that we want to do out there.
Okay.
And I would just add to that, Mr. Matthews and Mayor Spearman, that it's a combination of aircraft and route opportunities that we identified with this.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, see no questions? We'll move on to debate. I think Counselor Kaufman pretty much opened already, but is there anything else, Counselor Kaufman?
No, Mayor Spearman, other than, well, I guess than yes, Mayor Spearman, other than just to reiterate or to rephrase what Ms. Trent has just kind of identified there is, emphasizing on the commercial side, that's where the revenue opportunities really, really lie for us. So let's put in the infrastructure that starts to encourage and create those sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Sorry, I thought I had raised my hand and I pushed the wrong button as I want to do. Would you allow me a question or has that ship sailed?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'll be very quick. The extra paving on Bravo, are there other opportunities coming up with ACAP funding or other opportunities to get that paving done?
If I may, Counselor Carlson, ACAP is a annual funding. So there will be opportunities for applications. But of course, no certainty that they would be approved. But I do know it is an annual eligibility in terms of the application process.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Spearman.
Counselor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I thank you, Counselor Kaufman, for bringing this forward. I think option C is definitely the best, and I will support that. It's one of the largest economic drivers that we've had since we've acquired this airport. And I think it's, anytime we can get more traffic to our airport just is going to help our economy in the future. So I would definitely support option C, and I will support this.
Any further debate?
Carlson?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Thank you, Counselor Kaufman, for bringing forward this option. It is easily my second favorite option I've ever seen. And so I do support option B ahead of this one, so I don't think I'll be supporting this. I do agree that the airport paving expanded is something that we'll look forward to. But I think at this time, as we're rebuilding, I think we just had our consultants tell us that it's gonna be a two, three, four-year rebuilding process. And so I don't think the huge rush is on. I do think it's something necessary as part of the airport committee. I think we've been pushing for this. But knowing that there are other options for airport renovations and airport grants available out there that we will be hounding and trying to advocate for and secure for our community. And there's time to acquire those. So while I do like the idea, I'm still in support of option B. So thank you for bringing it forward, but I won't be in support of this one.
Thank you. Counselor Miyashiro?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. And my thanks to Counselor Kaufman as well for bringing this forward. But much like what Counselor Carlson said, I think if we have an opportunity to develop the Festival Square, in addition to the renovations that have been going on Third Avenue, in addition to what's going on with the Galt, or the, sorry, SAG, we can start leveraging all those things when we have our events downtown. We do have a plan for, well, we kind of have a plan for Galt Gardens, and I think we can still look at that. But at this point, I believe that we can, I'd rather, I prefer option B.
C is on the table.
Counselor Campbell?
Counselor Campbell?
Yeah, I just, I, I really believe in the, the balanced approach that was recommended, that we can, we've got the stimulate, stimulants money that was going back. We all, we, we all agreed on the, the three different projects in the beginning. Keep in mind, there was $125,000 incurred in detailed design for the, for the Festival Square Market. Not to mention all of the projects that have been created downtown, and not to mention the, the kind of forward thinking that is created from the heart of the city people to make this a real dynamic place, still being able to get part of the airport done as well. So I, I am in support of B, not C.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson?
Well, sometimes you just have to be an expert at listening to the experts, so I too am preferring option B, and will be voting against option C.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Counselor Kaufman to close?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I, I love this job. For all of the, all of the challenges that come with it, it's fun to listen to my colleagues. I really believe that, that putting the money into the airport now actually puts us ahead of the curve so that when through year two, year three, things start opening up, we're there. We're already there. I believe it's, it's about getting that investment, that opportunity going there. Yeah, to, to a previous speaker, absolutely, we got plans for Galt Gardens and we just, for whatever reason, keep overlooking it. And if we're going to be investing money in the core, I'd like to be focusing all of our funds in one big ass development down there, as opposed to a bunch of little ones where, again, it divides things off. There's lots of opportunity. Call the question.
Okay, question's been called. We'll do a roll call vote.
Counselor Parker?
In favor?
Acting Mayor Croson?
Opposed.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Just to be clear, we're, we're voting on proposal C, correct?
C, correct.
Yes, okay. Opposed.
Mayor Spearman?
Opposed.
Counselor Carlson?
Opposed.
Counselor Kaufman?
In favor?
Counselor Higgin?
In favor?
Moro?
Favor?
And Counselor Miyashiro?
Opposed.
Four to five, that's defeated.
Okay, I have another resolution from Deputy Mayor Campbell. Be it resolved that City Council approved the redistribution of projected municipal development stimulus program MSP funding on previously approved MST projects as presented in option B. Amend the 2018 to 2027 CIP grant municipal stimulus program allocations and corresponding totals to reflect the following. Lethbridge Airport renovation, 2018 to 2027 CIP D43, $10,353,000. Festival Square Market Plaza, 2018 to 2027 CIP D44 funding, $1,710,000. Direct the city manager to proceed on construction of the projects. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Thank you, your worship. Not much more to add other than that it, this does provide a nice balanced approach to allocating the stimulus funding that was previously approved, keeps us to that nice standard of Festival Square downtown. Lots of time and effort has been put into the, this project. So I, I recommend that project go ahead with the increased costs that it was creating. And also, we're still achieving some more infrastructure with the airport pavement rehabilitation. So it's a, to me, it's a, it's a win-win. I, I ask my colleagues to support option B.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this resolution? Counselor Moro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to be clear, so we've gone from approving Festival Square of, what, 900 and some odd thousand to 1.7 million? Is that what we're doing here?
That's correct, I believe, yep.
Sorry, can I get, let's make this one more time. I need explanation on why we've gone from 900 and some odd thousand. What's the $800,000 extra?
Okay, I think, I think it was, there was a slide in the presentation that showed that.
Yeah.
Can we put it on the screen, please?
I want to, I want to hear it again.
Okay, so here it is, 810,000 Festival Square in two components.
And I can expand on that if that's desirable.
Yes, I would, Mr. Malcolm. Thank you.
So it's Counselor Moro. The initial 485,000, which is in the first sub-bullet there, that is as presented last, two weeks ago on June 15th. And so the majority of that, 485,000 in, in overage, had to do with components of the project that were originally out of scope, but were brought into scope due to the nature of revitalization projects. And as we kind of peel things back, we understand the complexity of the, the very old environment. So we were adding in a water and a wastewater servicing that wasn't originally out, rehabbing the lane that went east-west between Fifth Street and, oh, sorry, yeah, Fifth Street and Sixth Street, adding community lighting and doing an entry sign and upgrading to, from a regular street light to decorative lighting. So that was the 485. In addition to that was some costing due to inflation. The second sub-bullet for the 325,000, these are all aspects that were envisioned by the community through the public engagement and our concept design process, but administratively, we had to remove or scale back just because of the sheer costing. That includes an interactive stage, a secondary entry sign from the south, programmable lighting so that they could, you know, for example, for St. Patrick's Day, it could be green as opposed to just the solid white all the time, and site furniture like tables and chairs. Again, all those components, we felt we would be able to fund at some other point in time through other means. And we just didn't think they were critical at this point in time with the budget. Through this process and, and money being available, we made the proposal with option B to bring them back in. Just an example would be for that interactive stage, when we did pull it out of this initial funding, we applied through the Healthy Canada Initiative for that aspect, and it was not supported through the community foundation. So we've tried to get funding in other ways, and if not supported at this point in time, we will continue that effort. But again, we, we wanted to provide council all three options from bronze standard to gold standard to, to nothing with Festival Square. So hopefully that helps.
And Mr. Malcolm, if I may, I'll just summarize that really, really simply. 360,000 is us opening the site once and not going back a few years later to replace infrastructure. So we're trying to be very efficient in terms of how we, we look at that site. So that's us trying to bring forward work that needed to happen later and not wanting to open it up later. 125,000 is inflationary factor. 325,000 is going from bronze to arguably silver with stage and lighting. Hopefully that supports and summarizes what Mr. Malcolm outlined.
Thank you. And my final question, so I just feel like we are like a horse with, when they're in the race and they have those blinders on where they just focus straight ahead. So let me ask you, either one of you two, who have been involved obviously through this process, seriously, is this the only option and the best option of where we can create a Festival Square for everyone in our community to enjoy and celebrate? Or is this, we're going this way because we have blinders on and we're focused on this one and only location?
I'll, I'll take that, Mr. Malcolm. So Counselor Moro, what I would suggest is we're trying to be very intentional about fully utilizing MSP funding. And the challenge we have is that we have three approved projects, two of which are associated with the airport, one of which is Festival Square. So it goes back to the options that we outlined to council. In order to exhaust all of the funding, these are the options we have under this funding. To the extent that council wanted to revisit a downtown revitalization and a, and a market square at an alternative location, that would be certainly something administration would be glad to support council in, in developing out what that might look like. But I think as it relates to the MSP funding, the, the, the options that we presented are a way in which you can fully utilize those funds based on those three approved projects based on guidance from the province.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Okay, on to debate. I think Counselor Campbell has opened. Any debate from counselors? Counselor Moro?
Yeah, well, you know what, I, I didn't support this Festival Square from day one because as Counselor Kaufman mentioned in earlier today with his suggestion to go to option C is that we, in, in my mind, we're, we're showing favoritism and I feel that just a few businesses in the community will benefit from this. I totally agree. We have a park that's underutilized. We want people to come to use the park, and yet we're picking a street in between Third and Fourth Avenue, half a block, and we're going to spend what council approved, $900,000, which has now escalated to 1.7 million, just blows me away and I'm, not, nothing wrong with the project. I would fully support it if it was somewhere neutral where everybody in the community, everybody in the downtown could benefit. I just see this as a very congested area. It's just, to me, it just does not fit in the overall best part of developing our downtown and getting people to come to downtown. Plus the fact that we're nearly doubling, while we just about are doubling, the cost of this project, I will not support the resolution.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I think it is a wonderful project, and I appreciate what Mr. Malcolm's presenting here. We're really living in inflationary times and concerned because this is probably going to be a trend moving forward. Not only has it been happening right now, but I think we may have like this for another year or two. Maybe this is an opportunity for just a, with the doubling in price, nearly almost a doubling in price. I just can't justify spending that much more, and hopefully when prices do come down, it might be a little more feasible, but this time I can't support it.
Thank you. Counselor Miyashiro?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Thank you to Deputy Mayor Campbell for this. So when we were elected, some of us too, it turns to go so many longer ago, every single election is about vibrant downtown. Every single election, what can we do to help our central business core? What can we do to make sure our central business core doesn't die? Every single election, it's an issue. Every single election. And now we have an opportunity to help develop some things that we've been talking about and, and make downtown a vibrant place to go to again, and help those business people downtown to get ahead. We've done some great things during COVID, allowed people to build patios on, on the street, relax some of those regulations, make it easier for, well, we put the parking rite downtown as well. Got the buses off, off Fourth Avenue. We're doing construction on Third Avenue to make it easier for people to get around downtown, to make it more walkable, to make it more usable, to make it more people-friendly. This, this is something that we should all be jumping on because the airport is great. We have, we're putting $10 million into the airport. And we're doing this now, and it's going to be easier now because we have no traffic. The, the one good thing is about, we're going to get people downtown maybe before we get traffic at the airport. And I think we need to consider that as well, when, when, how we're going to track Washington Air Canada, come back to Lethbridge. But we do know when, when the central business core gets upgraded, that more people are going to go town, downtown and patronize our, our businesses down there. I'm fully in support of this.
Thank you. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Not much to add after that. I just want to remind members of council that, that this was provincial dollars that were, were given to our community for some stimulus funding. And I think that's important to remember. Not, not alone, just the, the good stuff about continuing the work on our, our heart of our city master plan and all of council's strategic plans, as Counselor Miyashiro has, has talked about. But this was, this was, these were dollars that the province said, I think it was 12.06, something like that, million dollars given to Lethbridge for stimulus work. And we looked at 25 different projects, and council decided that these two were the highest priorities in our community. And we chose two or three of these projects because we also needed to spread some of this around because the stimulus works better when it, it's sort of spread out a bit. If any of, if any of the residents and council members have been downtown the last few weeks, when the patios have been open and people are out celebrating and, and doing things, the work we're doing in the heart of our city is working. It's electric down there. I had the luxury of chatting with a new resident to Lethbridge who just moved here in the middle of COVID and had not been able to get out and about and see how amazing our community is. And then I think it was last Friday, or I guess two weeks ago Friday now, they went for a walk downtown and were blown away by the people on the sidewalk, the people in the community. And Festival Square is just one more opportunity at making that happen. We've done huge investments in downtown with the, the new reconstruction and the roadwork, the investments in Galt Garden. This is just one more step, and I heartily support this. It is provincial stimulus money that if we do not spend it by December 31st of this year, I believe, it's gone. So I say let's move forward with the two approved projects that are in front of us today. I, I'm very pleased to see that the airport came in under budget, so we can do even a little bit more there. That's exciting news, but I fully support the Festival Square project as well. I did when we presented it to the province, and I still do. So you have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Croson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I see these two projects as so entirely complementary because we are building something at the airport to, you know, help travelers, help the businesses there, get people in and out. And then we're building something downtown that will actually give a destination when you are in town. There is a very good saying about when you're building things for tourism, and it's don't build things for tourists. If you build good things for locals and locals use it, the tourists will come. If you build things for tourists, there's no guarantee the locals will come because they realize it's a tourist trap and not for them. And so having things that are well-designed for our community, such as Festival Square, is vital if we actually want the airport to be well-used by tourists and by other people. The two are complementary. The other thing, and we hear this all the time from ourselves, and my colleagues on council say it quite regularly, is that we sometimes need to waste money on projects, and that's what Festival Square has felt like to me. This is a project that has been sitting around now for 15 or so years. In fact, up until a few years ago, a lot of people didn't even realize that it was called Festival Square until a few people started to use it because it had sort of been built and there was an idea that other parts were going to be built as well. But it got half-done and never went anywhere. And so this is completing something which has been talked about for at least a decade and a half and seeing the potential that is there. So all the money that's been put into this, this will actually fine-tune some of that and bring it to fruition. So I will be supporting this because, like I said, it's complementary, there's a lot going on, and it has actually a lot of impact on our community.
Thank you. Counselor Higgin?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. We talk about having a vibrant downtown, and that seems like we're discussing that nothing's been done down there. I look back over the years, there's been a ton done downtown. I was there for supper last week and seeing the bump outs and the activity going on, we've got a ton that's been done in our downtown core. Now, so being vibrant, absolutely. It's a big thing that comes up each, each election, as Counselor Miyashiro said. I could tell you a few other things that have come up that, that come up every single election. Why don't we do them? Because we don't have the money. So now we come up because it's quote-unquote "free" money from the province. Well, there's only one taxpayer out there. Province gives us money, we always say, well, gee, it's province money, it's free money. Well, guess what? It comes from you, myself, and everybody else in here that's a taxpayer. So when we have a project that comes in that high above budget, whether it's quote unquote free money, stimulus funding, et cetera, we send back administration to look at ways to better to better utilize these funds. One of them was obviously the the airport, which would create again the largest economic driver in our community. Now, you know, I guess because it's free money, it doesn't mean that we have to overspend it or or the budget shouldn't matter because it's free money. So for that and many other reasons, and again, being way over budget, I will not support this.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Campbell to close.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor, it's Joe. Mr. Mayor, it's Joe. I have a point of order. Just I would like to ask a question of the city manager, if I may, for clarification.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's been said that if we don't spend this money by the end of this year, we lose it. Mr. City Manager, could this money be directed, well, I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it. Could this money be directed to other projects?
What's been indicated to us, Counselor Morrow, is that the total pot of money we have for MSP, which would include this money, would need to be spent on those three approved MSP projects.
Right.
The options that we presented today were.
Right. Any of those three options?
That's right.
Correct. Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Carlson, have you not debated already?
Sorry, got distracted. My hand was still up. Yes, I debated.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Campbell to close.
I don't think I have anything more to add. My colleagues have pretty much said what I believe for for option B and I ask for your approval.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call vote.
Acting Mayor Carlson?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
In favor.
Mayor Spearman?
Favor.
Counselor Carlson?
In favor.
Counselor Kaufman?
In favor?
Counselor Hagan?
Opposed.
Morrow?
Opposed.
Counselor Mishiro?
In favor.
Counselor Parker?
Opposed.
That carries.
Hey, thank you. Okay, now we move to approval of bylaws. First one from Counselor Carlson, Bylaw six-two-eight-nine, Land Use Bylaw Amendment Read two-six-zero-four and two-seven-zero-two, Thirty-Fourth Street North in the Sharing Industrial Park. For second reading, be it resolved that Bylaw six-two-eight-nine, Land Use Amendment Read two-six-zero-four and two-seven-zero-two, Twenty-Fourth Street North, Sharing Business and Industrial Park be given second reading. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. We did have a public hearing earlier today. Just to refresh people's memories, the one that I'm bringing forward right now is to approve the amendment to allow the animal care major in addition to other land uses that are currently allowed on the caption parcel under the IB district.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Any debate?
Just for myself, Mr. Mayor, I think this is an excellent use for this parcel. I'm very pleased if the the applicant goes forward with the lead structure that they're talking with and attracting quality veterinary care to our community, which we all know is in short supply these days. So I would ask for my colleagues' support.
Thank you. Take that as your close. All in favor? Are any opposed? That is unanimous. We'll move to third reading. Be it resolved that Bylaw six-two-eight-nine, Land Use Amendment Read two-six-zero-four and two-seven-zero-two, Twenty-Fourth Street North, Sharing Business and Industrial Park be given third reading and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Carlson?
Call for the vote.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you. Next is Bylaw six-two-six-five, moved by Counselor Carlson, Municipal Development Plan. For third reading, be it resolved that Bylaw six-two-six-five, Municipal Development Plan be given third reading and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Sorry, I'm having trouble clicking the buttons properly. Thank you, Mayor Spearman. We've had a very lengthy process on our MDP. I think our staff has done an excellent job over the last, I'm going to say, three years in working through this with the various stakeholders in our community. Council also had some great opportunities to listen to our community and to bring forward amendments. And I just need a clarification because in my package, it just calls this the amendments to six-two-six-five, but I believe we made those previously. So this is the vote on the entire MDP. Am I correct? Or were there other amendments coming forward that I may have misunderstood?
This is it. We considered the amendments before and then we, instead of approving it all in one meeting, we moved third reading to this meeting.
So, thank you. So this is just third reading on on the entire MDP, not just the amendments, though as it states in my package.
Your worship, I think it it's to read second reading with amendments. I think as amended is is the intent of it. There's no more amendments to put.
Thank you. That was just some confusion I had.
Thank you for the clarification.
The amendments. So just to thank all the staff and our community stakeholders and all our residents that provided input. Thank to to my colleagues who did the work and dove in and provided some amendments. And I fully support the MDP as amended and would ask for my colleagues' support.
Thank you. Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed?
Yeah, Joe.
Okay, I think we should do a roll call vote then.
Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Uh, in favor.
Mayor Spearman?
In favor.
Carlson?
In favor.
Counselor Kaufman?
In favor.
Counselor Hagan?
Opposed.
Counselor Morrow?
Opposed.
Counselor Mishiro?
In favor.
Counselor Parker?
Favor.
Acting Mayor Carlson?
In favor.
Seven to two, that carries. There is an amendment to this one, so it's on the second page.
Okay, I will need a mover for the Westminster Area Redevelopment Plan.
Counselor Kaufman?
Okay, thank you. And this one is also for third reading, but before we go to third reading, there is an amendment.
I'll I'll move that we make the proposed administrative amendments, your worship.
Okay.
And basically, I think the gist of it is to add the land acknowledgement statement and to remove a duplicated statement that was in twice.
Okay, so be it resolved from Counselor Carlson that the amendments to Bylaw six-two-three-six, as outlined in Attachment one, be adopted. Are there any questions? I see none. Move on to debate.
I I'll close, your worship.
Any debate? I see none. Go ahead and close. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Could be looked on as as very minor housekeeping amendments. One is just to remove a duplicate statement and the other is to harmonize this document with council's direction and adoption of our reconciliation plan. So I just ask for my colleagues' support.
Okay, thank you. So question's been called. All in favor? Are there any opposed? Okay, the amendments are carried. We'll now move to the third reading of Bylaw six-two-three-six. Be it resolved that Bylaw six-two-three-six, Area Redevelopment Plan Adoption Read Westminster Area Redevelopment Plan as amended, be given third reading and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Just quickly, I'd like to thank Ms. McLean for her her leadership, her persistence on this. If you look in the dictionary under persistence, you actually see a picture of her. She's incredibly passionate about Westminster. She has done a yeoman's service in in getting people involved in her community. I know that intuitively she understands that Westminster is not Riverstone or or one of the new newly designed subdivisions, but she certainly carries a tremendous amount of passion and and information in that neighborhood. So I thank her for for her work and for rallying people. I want to thank Ms. Javier Orio as well for the work that she provided for staff because I know that it was there were a lot of challenges to get things to the place where they are as well and to appreciate the work that she did on all the amendments that were brought forward as well and getting the document in front of us. So it's kind of an exciting day for me because doing an MDP is is a rarity. Doing an ARP for Westminster is just as rare and it's a pleasure to support both. So I would thought to call the question.
Okay, are there any questions for Counselor Kaufman? Counselor Carlson?
Not a question. It was just debate, your worship.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate Counselor Kaufman's comments of staff, Ms. McLean and the other board in the Westminster area who did a lot of excellent work. I want to add my thanks to Counselor Kaufman, who I think spent a lot of time wading through the information and brought forward some excellent amendments. So I'd like to add my thanks to him as well. Thank you. I'm in full support.
Any further debate? Counselor Kaufman to close.
Question?
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Thank you. That's unanimous.
Yes, Joe, sorry. Joe's opposed. Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, carries eight to one. Okay. Inquiries, I've submitted an inquiry. There'll be a response at the next meeting. Council updates? Are there any council updates? Counselor Kaufman, do you have a council update?
Am I supposed to?
City clerk said that you did, but we can, if you don't, that's fine.
We had a request to create, establish a meeting for the Governance SPC for July fifteenth.
Yes. Forgive me, Madam Clerk. What what other brilliant aspect of that that do I have?
Mayor Spearman will read the motion.
Okay, you you've submitted a motion, Counselor Kaufman. Amendment to twenty-twenty-one Council and Committee Meetings Calendar, be it resolved that City Council amend the twenty-twenty-one Council and Committee Meetings Calendar by adding adding a Governance Standing Policy Committee meeting on July the fifteenth at one-thirty P M.
Yes, it was so brilliant, I forgot about it. That's right. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that. Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Yes, Governance Standing Policy Committee was supposed to have a meeting on June twenty-fourth. We had some challenge getting some information, so we did actually postpone that meeting and instead Governance sat and and had a conversation about the COA review process. So Governance will hold its meeting instead on July fifteenth, I believe at one-thirty, where we will be looking at a presentation from IT and be part of the the network, the program, the the it's that time of day, six forty-nine.
Digital transformation, Counselor Kaufman.
Thank you. Digital transformation, yes. As well, Council or Governance SPC will also be looking at the first draft of the Procedure Bylaw. So members of, all members of council certainly are are invited to attend and spend some time with us going through the the draft Procedure Bylaw.
Thank you. Acting Mayor Carlson?
If you don't mind going first with Counselor Carlson's because mine will feed off of his. It's an inquiry I think we both have.
Okay, Counselor Carlson?
Thank you. I I do have an inquiry. Counselor Carlson's or Acting Mayor Carlson's is correct, but I think we have a I think Counselor Kaufman put forward a motion that we do have to approve or consider change in the calendar. So I can I can wait, but mine is an inquiry.
Are these related to the motion in front of us? Were?
Nope. My I was, my hand was up for inquiries, but I think it may have been skipped, your worship.
Okay, I thought inquiries had to be submitted in writing prior to the meetings now.
They can be done verbally and then we have to follow up with the written one after we have a verbal.
Okay, so.
We just don't expect an answer.
Yeah, okay, so there's people challenging the process that people have tried to ask inquiries previously and were told, no, they weren't. But anyway, we're off, we're off topic. We're focused on the the motion submitted by Counselor Kaufman to amend the council calendar to include the Governance Standing Policy Committee on July fifteenth at one-thirty P M. Is there any further questions related to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's Joe. My hand's up.
Go ahead. Yeah.
First off, first off, Mr. Mayor, I thank you for following process and I would not allow any inquiries because as you stated, they should be in writing. Thank you. Now, to my question to Counselor Kaufman. So we're meeting on July fifteenth, but my understanding is that whatever this committee comes up with has to be referred to a meeting of council. So can you just maybe explain to me whatever comes out of that meeting on July fifteenth? What council meeting will that go to?
Thank you, Counselor Morrow, for the question. Yes, so Governance will be receiving a presentation from IT and will also be reviewing first draft of the Procedure Bylaw. If there are any recommendations coming from IT, and I believe that there will be, those recommendations will be sent to council. I'm assuming at the next council meeting, which would be is it July twenty-seventh-ish, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh, thank you. On the Procedure Bylaw, it may take a different path. Governance SPC may have to meet a second time to have additional conversation around it. It should actually be circulated to all members of council. I personally would like to see it on council agenda early August as first reading with the opportunity for all of council, obviously, public as well, to to have a conversation about it if required. So we may have to have a second Governance Standing Policy Committee meeting prior to that going to council, but that would appear be appearing at a future council as well. Does that answer your question?
Thanks. Yeah, yes, it does. Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that this, whatever was going to come out of that meeting of Governance on July fifteenth, we had enough time that it would go to council and this council could make decisions. So thank you for that. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you. Then on the Procedure Bylaw, it is, it it's a fundamental part, actually, of the orientation. So it is important that this council actually deal with it so it's in place for the for the next council. Thank you.
Okay, anything further on the change to the council calendar? Okay. We'll move on to debate. Counselor Kaufman?
I have opened. Thank you.
Any debate? You may close also.
As eloquently as I opened, call the question.
Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we will have an SPC meeting on July fifteenth. Thank you. Is unanimous? Okay, so my understanding is. Okay, so my understanding is inquiries do have to be submitted in writing. Not sure what councillor Carlson and councillor or acting Mayor Croson, what you're under, what you're proposing.
Sorry, Mayor Spearman, it's kind of an over-the-wall, uh, that wouldn't have been able to make it because we weren't under a heat wave. I wanted to give the city manager, uh, an opportunity as an inquiry, uh, to tell our residents, um, how they can beat the heat, how the city facilities can help them beat the heat, what we're doing. But if councillor Morrow refuses to let that happen, I'm okay with that. I'll do it on my own.
Community pub.
Uh, excuse me, that's out of line. That's not councillor Morrow refusing it, that's following policy, that's following our procedure. So get off your high horse, councillor Carlson. It's not councillor Morrow, he's following the rules. Rules are for everyone.
Okay, all right, and city communications is, uh, actively putting information out, informing the public what they can do. So I've already seen, uh, news releases and, uh, council has been informed by the city manager, pretty much the same messaging, uh, on what is happening to manage the heat and inform citizens about options. Acting, acting Mayor Croson.
Thank you. I was under the impression that we could do verbal inquiries as long as we do follow up with a written and as long as we don't expect an answer the day we ask. So this is, again, this is one more heat-related. Right now, between four and seven PM every day, uh, community members are being asked to reduce their electrical use because we have to support the electrical grid. And so I was just wondering if there's anything we are doing in city operations that will help decrease the use on the electrical grid. Um, how are we being a good community partner? Not expecting an answer right now because the heat wave will last for the next two weeks.
Good. Okay, so we will get, you will submit that in writing and we'll, uh, it'll be submitted to the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, what's next? Okay, we'll move on to the close meeting resolutions. The omnibus motion first from deputy mayor Campbell. Ten point one, ten point two and ten point four. Be it resolved that council direct that the close meeting discussions with respect to the human resources matter, uh, the committee matter number one and information process matter remain confidential pursuant to sections nineteen, confidential evaluations, twenty-one, harmful to intergovernmental relations and twenty-four, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Call a question.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Another motion from deputy mayor Campbell. Committee matter number two. Be it resolved that council direct that the close meeting discussions with respect to committee matter number two remain confidential pursuant to section twenty-four, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And further be it resolved that city council direct the city manager to proceed with the confidential direction received in closed session. Deputy Mayor Campbell.
Call a question.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And finally, I have a resolution from councillor Carlson for adjournment that we do now adjourn the regular meeting of city council until Tuesday, July the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. Stay cool, everyone, and call for the vote.
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Bye-bye.